All right, who's got over and under for the 10 o'clock?
We are about to go live, just so you are aware. And I'm going to let everybody in, okay?
Thank you, Seth. Hi, everybody, we're just letting everybody in before we officially start this meeting, so welcome. We'll give it a second to get everyone in. All right, I think everyone's in, is the board prepared to begin? In our little boxes, okay. I will then welcome everybody to the March 9th, 2021 Select Board of the Town of Situate Meeting in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency and the Related Emergency Executive Order dated March 12th, 2021, almost a year ago. Town of Situate Public Meeting shall shall be meeting remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded and is can be viewed live on Situate Community Television, Facebook Live. If you would like to participate in this meeting, you need to go to the Zoom link on the agenda on the town meeting and follow the link there. Tomorrow, this recording will be available on Channel 9, Comcast Channel 9 and YouTube Situate Community Television. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion to accept to call the order and to accept the agenda.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Conley, because we are meeting remotely, all votes must be taken by roll call.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion path is 5-0 to accept the agenda. Before we kick off the meeting, I do want to just note three things about the agenda. The the public hearing on Salt Society has been postponed. There was a hiccup in the the required notices that were to be made on that, so they will come forward, I would presume, in two weeks with that with that presentation. There is also no executive session, which is on the agenda as the last item. There has been, we had that as a placeholder for an anticipated incoming discussion that needed to be happening, and that did not occur, so we will delete that from our agenda. And every week, I forget to do this, but we I would just want to announce that after our 8:20 article, agenda item, we will be taking a five-minute break because we have determined that after two hours, that's necessary. So those are the changes to the agenda. And then I will go right on to Zoom-ins or walk-ins, we call them Zoom-ins now. If somebody would like to address the board on any matter that's not on this agenda, if you could use the reactions icon on the bottom of your screen to raise hand or simply take yourself, put your video on so that we can see you, and we will allow call on you to address the board. And I'm scrolling through. I see no hands raised, and I see no new faces on the video, so we will not, we do not have any Zoom-ins or walk-ins tonight, which will bring us to our town administrators' reports. And Mr. Bedrow?
Evening, evening to the board, we'll start with our COVID updates. As probably most of you know, last week, the governor added teachers to the list of people who could be vaccinated. They are eligible to sign up actually starting this Thursday. However, the CVS vaccination sites have allowed them to already register. So teachers are already getting their vaccines to CVS, and they can sign up at the mass vaccination sites starting Thursday. You probably saw that Moshfield is running a vaccination clinic for their teachers. We have reached out to them, we're hoping to get some of our teachers vaccinated to their clinic also. I can update the board on that as soon as I get confirmation from them and from the school department. We have been, we have received confirmation that we'll be getting the second dose for those residents that we vaccinated in our clinic earlier this year. We did 100 doses. Some towns have been informed that they were not going to get their second doses. We have gotten ours. Those individuals have all been informed when and where they need to show up, and they will be getting their second doses this week. So that will take care of those 100 people. We are continuing to work, Drew is continuing to work to see what else we can get for additional doses. We are still in Phase 2 Step 2, so that's 65 and over, two comorbidities, and now employees of school departments. Thursday morning is when the state will dump their vaccination appointments for next week. So people looking for the mass vaccinations, Thursday morning is when those go live. Otherwise, CVS is not part of the state rollout. They actually get their doses directly from the federal government. So they roll them out whenever they get their doses, people should keep an eye on those. From what I've been hearing, people seem to be having success with the CVS, being able to get appointments at the CVS, I think a little easier than the mass vaccination sites. So we'll continue to roll those out, and hopefully, at some point, the state will release a large number of vaccines for us so we can have a large vaccination clinic. Since last Monday, we had 30 new cases, that's up from 22 last week. We seem to be in that 20 to 30 range the last several weeks. Positivity rating dropped to 1.76 now from 2.19. That is the third week in a row our positivity rating has gone down. So we are moving in the right direction, the state was at 1.66, now from 2.15 of the following week. We are in Phase 3 Step 2 of the reopening process. For most people, that means restaurant restrictions in terms of capacity caps have been eliminated. Restaurants can take as much capacity as they can, as long as they maintain six feet of social distancing, six at a table, and no more than 90 minutes for each party. So they have to move people in and out. They can't have entertainment, they're just not allowed right now to have live singing. So they can have guitar playing, they can have a DJ at their license allows, but they're not allowed to have singing indoors. If the numbers keep going well on March 22nd, we'll go to Phase 4 Step 1, which would allow limited capacity in places like the TD Garden and the Red Sox at Fenway Park when they come back this spring. So people need to continue to wear masks, people need to continue to wash their hands. Even if you've been vaccinated, the CDC is recommending that you continue to wear a mask when you're out and about. And as the numbers keep dropping, hopefully, we'll be able to open more and more of the economy. The Widow's Walk Golf Course will be closing from their winter activities this Sunday evening, March 14th. We will be preparing the course for opening hopefully April 1st. So dog walking and things like that after this Sunday will no longer be allowed as the crews will be out there preparing the course for hopefully an April 1st opening. We're going to have a really nice couple of days tomorrow and Thursday and Friday, so get out and enjoy it while you can. And then we'll be closing that to the walkers again to get it ready for the summer for Monday. Cole Parkway Marina is in full swing, if you get a chance to get on, we have two barges going now, the pylons are going in, really coming along nicely, kind of cool to watch them. We're going to try to get some drone pictures actually of that, but that is progressing. Still on schedule to be finished in time for the voting season. Cedar Point is ongoing, they are working their way back from the neck and down the two legs. We are on schedule there, again, it is a very congested area, it is difficult to get through when the contract is working, so we ask people to stay out of Cedar Point. Unless you live there while the construction's going on, there's just really not a lot of room out there on those big machines trying to dig those trenches. Really good news, the senior center project is nearing completion, the staff is moving in. Even as we speak, they've been moving in the last couple of days. The Veteran Service Officer will be moving up there also. We will be opening the building right now, it's scheduled for April 1st, COVID depending. We are looking at what type of activities we can run with the restrictions we have, so we will open that as quickly as possible. There will still be a lot of work to do outside as the landscaping, we'll wait for the warmer weather. Hoping the end of March, probably in April, we'll start the landscaping. But the building will be open, it looks great. Again, if any of the board members want to take a swing up, let me know, we'll go up and show you around. But it's nice to see they moved in. If you need the Veteran Service Officer, you can call and make an appointment again to see him by appointment. But he has his own office, it's very nice up there. Hopefully, in the in the summertime, with the passage of the town budget, we'll be able to start doing the lunch program that the council agent talked about when they presented their budget. We are doing water flushing, we've seen some of that on Facebook, people seeing the flushing, getting some brown water. The Water Department is going to be flushing all week. Country Way from First Parish to the Cohasset Line, Menloch Road, Booth Hill Road, Hollid Street, Canet Road, Indian Trail, Mordecai Lincoln Road, and Henry Turner Bailey. Also, small streets off of those streets will be getting flushed. Went out there yesterday and today, I can tell you the flushing is working. What we're seeing coming out of the pipes now is nowhere near what we were seeing two years ago when we started these projects. So it does seem to be getting better, we're going to continue it as long as we have the water to do it. We'll be flushing again as late in the spring as we can until we start seeing the water situation changing. If you have any questions or have any problems, call the Water Department, 71-545-8735. And lastly, I want to let the board know, we've been working for a while on filling the position of planning, Director of Planning Economic Development, Brad Washburn left last year. We left that position vacant because of questions about COVID and the budget, we actually only funded it for half a year this year. But we've done two rounds of looking and doing, searching for resumes, we had a round of interviews. Committee of myself, HR Director Brad Clark, Finance Director Nancy Holt, and Planning Department, Planning Board Chairman Anne Burbine conducting interviews, and we are happy to say that we unanimously chose to go from within and promote Kyle Boyd, Coastal Resource Officer to the position of Planning and Economic Development. I think I can speak for the whole committee, he knocked it out of the park with his answers. He showed a vision and a real enthusiasm for the position. So I'd like to go from within if we can, so happy to see that Brad's gonna, that Kyle's gonna step up and fill that position, it's been a long time. And then once he sets his feet and gets settled in, we'll start looking to backfill his position. But we'll have him on probably before Tommy, I wouldn't say next week, but within the next couple of weeks after he's kind of got his office set up and everything to talk to the board and give you an idea of what he's looking to do and where the board wants to go. But really, I don't know, Nas, if you want to add anything, really enthusiasm, I think, a real idea of where he wants to take the office and what he wants to do and the collaboration work he wants to do really impressed all four of us.
It was a very impressive interview.
That's what I have for tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bedrow, and you know, the whole board is just delighted to hear that that position's filled, it's critical for so many functions at Town Hall, as everyone on this call knows. So congratulations to Kyle, and we look forward to having him in as soon as he gets his feet under him to talk about his his vision for for the town. So thank you for that, does the board have any questions for Jim about his report?
Jim, can we just let the town folks know about the updating of all the veteran signs around town? I'm sure I'm not the only one that's noticed that a couple are missing, and I just want to make sure they know that we're taking care of them and refurbishing them.
So I got a call from Mara last week who noticed that the memorial sign on the island outside of her house donated, you know, saying that it was named after a veteran, the intersection was named after a veteran, was missing. I checked with the Veteran Service Officer, and he found out a lot of them were missing. What happened is one of the DPW foremen went to fix one of the signs and noticed that the holders for the flags that are on there were broken. So he took that one down and decided of his own initiative, he was going to take down some of the other ones. He's taken them all back to the shop, he's fixing all the flag holdings, he's painting all the signs. When the weather's bad, he's in the shop, and he'll have them all back up from Memorial Day. When they put them up, they will sand the poles down, if the weather permits, they'll repaint those poles. But you know, he just noticed some of them were looking a little tired, so he took them all down. Would have been nice, so I had an answer when Mara called me, but I sent her a picture, they're doing a real nice job on them. They'll look really good when they go back up, so I want to thank them for that, and I think the board will be happy when they get back up.
It is nice, it's all good news, so I want to, in case anybody else out in town noticed, so thanks, that was it.
Any other questions for Jim? Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify, so we're still in yellow, is that what you said under our designation? Or did they give up on the colors?
Still as far as I know, we are in yellow, I have not seen a change in designation. That'll be updated again on Thursday.
Okay, and I, did the survey close for Pier 44? On Friday, technically?
Mike Mincello asked me to keep it open for a few more days because we were inching up to 1,000, he really wanted to get 1,000.
Everybody hasn't done it.
We were over 950, and he said, a couple more days, we'll get up to 1,000, so he wanted to keep it open. So right now, we'll keep it open to the end of the week, and then I'll start compiling that data for the board.
Okay, yeah, I think if we can, I mean, we'll look at the agenda for the next meeting, but if the very least, if we can get the results of that and then start talking about next steps, that'd be great. I know that there are 955 people that are very interested in knowing how that came up. Good, all right, if there are no other questions for the town administrator? Seeing no one raising a hand, we will go on to our 650, and I just want to clarify, we are going to discuss the Salt Society use of the sidewalk, but we cannot discuss their alteration of premises to extend service, liquor service out to the sidewalk as what I understand it, so just a little clarification, I'm a little muddled on that. Our 650 is to rename the common vic license for Blackbird Bake Goods to Starling Bakery at 101 Front Street, and Scott Lights is the owner, is he with us tonight? Let's see.
If he is, he will need to raise his hand, I do not see a name.
If there's a representative from the bakery, could you please take your video off or raise your hand so we know how to recognize you, and I'm looking through the names.
He may not be here.
I do not see him here.
It's just a change of name.
Yeah, okay. We did receive obviously the backup on this request, I think that they've been getting rave reviews as from what I hear on Front Street. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about this name change application?
Like a motion?
I would love a motion, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Move to approve a common vicular's license for Starling Bakery at 101 Front Street in Situate.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Karen, seeing any further, not seeing any further discussion. This requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Aye.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion carries 5-1, 5-0, thank you.
Chair, your stones are amazing.
I have heard nothing but good things, so the only, the only negative I've heard is they run out of stuff because it's so popular, so that's awesome. All right, second, I apologize, I have to scroll back and forth, my printer went on the fritz today. Our next item is a 7 o'clock vote and discuss, as I mentioned, no public hearing on the permission to use the sidewalk for alteration of premises at the Salt Society, and Mr. Bedrow will be presenting that on behalf of the applicant.
Can't do that yet.
Yes, because it's not a public hearing tonight.
Yeah, we're not discussing the premises.
Oh, it says public hearing.
Yeah, I know, I, yeah, we're not doing that piece of it, we're talking about the alteration of premises, which the board has the authority to grant.
This is just really a simple agreement drawn up by by council to allow Salt Society to use the public sidewalk, separate from their premises, which you'll have to consider in the public hearing, but this is an agreement where the board says, yes, you have the right to use our sidewalk in front of your establishment under the following condition. We did go out there last year and make sure that what they're planning on using still allows sufficient, I think Bob Borges said 45 inches, sufficient room for wheelchairs and things to get by, it does. This is a stock agreement that has been used in other towns. And it's, again, it's fairly simple, dispels all what they can and can't do and what they're liable for in case something happens.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, I think we all saw it was very well received and and didn't cause any problems that I'm aware of. Does anyone have any questions or other questions or comments about this? Ms. Conley?
We're essentially doing the same thing as we did last year, Jim.
Yeah, they're looking at the exact same.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Karen, if, and can I just interrupt for one second? If you're not speaking, we've gotten some feedback, if you could mute yourself, if, I don't know what the...
I'll take care of that.
Okay, so the man behind the curtain will take care of that, yes, sorry, Ms. Karen, go ahead.
That's okay, A, I did not hear what Jim's response was to Karen, what?
Yes, they're looking at the same area that they had last year, kind of tucked underneath that overhang.
Okay. And then my only other question is, you know, are we as a board prepared to approve the same for all the other restaurants down there? So I know nobody else has applied yet, but I just think it's something that we need to consider as we move through the process.
One of the problems you have, Mara, is some of your other establishments don't have the space to put tables on the sidewalk and still allow for access back and forth, particularly with a wheelchair.
Yeah, I mean, that that is my concern, that I think I said 48 inches, right? So I just want to make sure.
It's going to be a case-by-case basis of whether or not they can accommodate that space if we carve out room for them. I know in front of the galley, probably not possible. Sidewalk's a little wider in front of Hybernian, we'd have to go measure that. If some restaurant goes back into Reva, obviously, they have their side patio, so they...
Right.
But they did have space.
I just want to make sure we're thinking about the whole area.
Okay. And, yep, Mr. Vignani?
Yeah, I'd like to support this as well, I think it's a great idea. And to piggyback on what Mara just said, I think we should reconsider shutting the street down again. I think that was a huge success last year, and we should try and figure out if there's a way to do that, you know, when the weather gets warm enough for people to go outside, so certainly not on this agenda tonight, but I think it had a great atmosphere down there, and it helped the local businesses, so I'd like to talk about that probably after any of the town meeting.
So to that point, two quick points I want to make, one, just, you know, I'm sure the board is aware, this application to use the sidewalk is not a temporary, as they were all last year. This is, this will be, they will be given permission until, you know, at some point, we could kick it away, I suppose, but they won't have to come back every year for this. The point, Mr. Vignani, so right now, I think we are tentatively asking, I don't know if it's going to be the Chamber or the Situate Local or our EDC, they've been working on with outreach to all of the local businesses to try to figure out a plan, a macro plan for the street and for Front Street in particular, and for the, all the business communities in general. And I believe they're going to be on our agenda in, on the 23rd, so time to review that. But I do want to note, we have already received some correspondence that it is not universally enjoyed by the businesses. So they're going to take all that data and present it to us in two weeks.
Great.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board about the Salt Society request to use the sidewalk? Shaking hands, I will, I do see we have some members of the business community, so I would like to open it up to the public if they would like to comment on this. We're discussing Salt Society putting side seating out on the sidewalk, we are not yet discussing their request for extension of premises because there was a notification glitch, and we will revisit that at the next meeting. Is, if you'd like to raise your hand or take your video off on this matter, go right ahead. Not seeing any, okay. Is the board, if there's no other discussion, when someone like...
Motion, I move that the Select Board enter into a license agreement with Kara Tondorf, owner of Salt Society, to use the portion of town's property referenced and described in the license agreement.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, is there a second?
I can.
This is a roll call vote, so if you guys are remote, it's a roll call vote, it's required.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
She said yes.
Okay, Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries 5-0. I have been informed that poor Kara Tondorf is probably jumping on at 7, so when she does, we'll just inform her that that part of the discussion has already been approved in favor of her, which will bring us to the change of manager for seasonal license for the Situate Beach Association, as well as the 2021 renewal of seasonal, oh, do we do have, do we need to, is that a public hearing? I'm sorry, Lorena, Jim.
No, it is not a public hearing.
Okay, so renewal of their liquor license, Situate Beach Association is Todd on. We got Karen.
If he is, I do not see him.
Do not see him either.
He should be on.
Yeah.
We're a little early.
Yeah. With the board have an objection to...
Right there.
Oh, is he here, is he?
Not sure.
No, I don't think so, that's Mr. O'Donohue, hi, Steve. Would the board have any objection to just tabling that, just to get, we are a little early? In case he jumps on and we can, he can just wait until the next discussion? Karen likes that idea. Any, Mr. Vice Chair, you're okay with that?
Yes. Steve's got all night.
Steve, are you here on this matter? Oh, he is, great. I'm unmuted, Mr. O'Donohue, are you here for the discussion about the...
Yes, I am.
Remember that you're presenting or are you a commenter?
No, I'm just, I was just viewing to make sure, as a past president and a board member, I wasn't sure who was going to be on tonight, and I just wanted to make sure that things were going to go smoothly.
Okay, would you have an objection if we were to just let our 7:20 go first, just to give them, anybody that has an opportunity, that wants to jump in, Ken?
Go right ahead, and I'll try to get in touch with Todd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, so we will jump to the Planning Board zoning articles review, I see Karen Joseph. We're so, we're just zooming, oh, and there's Anne Burbine, good, we have both of our applicants, so, or not applicants, our presenters. I did speak with Anne earlier today, the board obviously is familiar with the articles before us, but because there are three sort of significant zoning proposals going to be on the warrant, we did, I did ask if they would just come and give us the Cliff Notes on on what will be presented as we will be voting on these later tonight, so I will turn it over to Karen and Anne.
All right, so the first article is going to be the North Situate. What we want to do is add a North Situate Village Center, an overlay district, and do some north, do some housekeeping, general housekeeping to the VCN and to make some changes in the bylaw, to make the bylaw consistent with the zoning map. So what we've done for North Situate is that we have two two VCN villages, an inner village and an outer village. And that, that's going to promote traditional development patterns and allow for mixed use, multifamily housing, open spaces, streets, and a vibrant pedestrian downtown. It's very similar to the Green Bush Driftway VCN. And there was been a series of public meetings throughout over almost the past two and a half years on this, starting with the North Situate Visioning Plan, and then going through a series of public meetings with the Economic Development Commission. So the overlay districts all stay the same. The zoning also incorporates, because we had, because we still had our public hearing open and the way our advertisement was done, we were able to incorporate the Housing Choice Directives for North Situate, that the, that was our acts of 2020 came down at the end of January. And so we found out that every, an MBTA community is supposed to have a multifamily district, a byright multifamily district with a density of 15 units per acre and within a half mile of a MBTA station. So we were able to accommodate that in the proposed zoning by changing the multifamily to 15 units by right, and it is within a half mile of a MBTA station. That's the basic North Situate, it's a, it's a VCN, just like just like Green Bush. I mean, is there, and the housekeeping is very, the housekeeping is where we're changing to Select Board throughout the whole document. to select board throughout the whole document, throughout the whole zoning bylaw. We're changing all references to general business to business, removing harbor business, commercial and residential multifamily. And most of the rest of the changes have to do with, you know, adding the VCN district in, changing, we're changing the design standards around as we have found it very confusing, the way they're written. So we tried to organize the stuff that stays with the building more together and the stuff that stays with the site together. And then we're clarifying some sections, one section in the parking.
Terrific. Well, will there be hard copies of the red line changes available at town meeting? Have you guys thought about that yet?
Not for everybody.
No, 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 I don't think everyone will want them, but I think that we should.
We can make a limited, the way this is done, it's based on the whole zoning bylaw. So we would be copy, we could have several red line copies available.
Yeah, I think we just left them at the, at one of the tables in the back if somebody wants to see it. I think that that comes up every time we do something like this, that people want to see it. And perhaps maybe prior, we can, we can make that more available to folks.
Well, it's also available right now. It's at the town clerk's office, it's at the planning board, and it is on the, it's on the planning board webpage of the, of the website. So the information is out there. We made a couple of changes during the public hearings, and that stuff has also been posted to the town website as well on the planning board webpage.
Terrific. That's great. Thank you.
We had very few people attend the public hearing, but those who did attend voiced overwhelming support for the, for this zoning change.
Terrific. Great. No, that's good to hear. I didn't, I was not aware, and so we'll make sure that folks know that they can have a look at it, so we don't have to kill trees for town meeting. Are there any questions about the North Cituit Overlay District from the board? Okay, you want to jump on to the signed by law?
Nope, Tony.
Oh, Tony, I'm sorry. Yep.
Okay. Karen, just a quick question. You said you changed the design standards and the design guidelines, but you said you reorganized them.
We reorganized them because as, as I was writing decisions under the Green Bush VCN, we've had a couple of special permits. The order was inconsistent, and so all the information is there. It's just in a different, in a different, it's just recategorized.
That's my question. You just reorganized it. You didn't change any of the standards. It's just putting it in.
We didn't change any of the standards. We didn't change any of the standards at all. We just kind of reorganized it so that it makes, it would make more sense to people reading the zoning bylaw.
Great, thanks.
Any, Ms. Karen?
I just, Karen, you know, really briefly, just because it's a lot of different codes and things to read through. What's the biggest benefit of the changes that you're making to the, to North Cituit?
Ultimately, it's when sewer comes, it's going to allow for the, the whole North Cituit to be redeveloped. I mean, North Cituit all, right now has a village business overlay district overlay. So you can already do multifamily, you can already do mixed use. But it just gives, it's a form based zoning code, so we changed, it allows some of the standards so that some of the redevelopment can occur, like say, right in the village center, you might have a mixed use building. Well, that can be developed right up to the, to the sidewalk, to the property line, which is very consistent with what is happening in North Cituit now.
Okay, thank you.
To Goodrich?
Yes, I mean, number one, I thank you for all of the work for, you've been in the five yard line here for two and a half years, and it's yeoman's work. I mean, the foresight, I mean, the brilliance of this for me is, as you just said, the foresight for what might happen, or what can happen when sewer does come. And I, again, unless I'm misreading it, I think that's the strongest understanding that the benefits are really down the line. I mean, obviously, there's some, but is that a good assumption that it's really having that really good insight for, for years to come? So there'll be.
Yes, it is. This is about the future. It's not about right now. As Karen pointed out, a lot of things can happen now. Much of it is precluded by, by not having sewer. And if we don't do this, then it will turn into a free for all, and we don't want that. We want this to be a controlled development that will be in the best interests of everyone.
Ms. Conley?
Oh, to clarify, this is then the culmination of, I remember attending a very well attended meeting at the library and about zoning and the vision for the future. So this is a culmination of that process. Is that right?
That's correct.
Correct, yes.
That was a very, very well attended meeting.
EDC had been working on this with Brad Washburn and ultimately to the planning board. This is in reality been in the works for years. It's now come to the point of doing things, making the zone more user friendly in terms of reading it and basically protecting everyone's interests as we go forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the North Cituit? All right, then we will scurry on to the signed by law.
Madam Chair, I saw Tara Kondorf just came in. Maybe you want to tell her.
I, I did see, I, I will pause. Thank you, Mr. Vignani. Kara, we were well ahead of schedule, and you wanted to jump on. We, the board reviewed your request for the, the use of the sidewalk and unanimously approved it. Are you there? Oh, you're there. Okay.
I'm here.
So if, unless there's something you would want to add, we'll look forward to seeing you at the next meeting to have the public hearing on the alteration of premises application.
That sounds perfect. Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome to stay with us, but we have covered your business.
I'm good, but thank you. And I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you so much for jumping on.
Yep.
And also, I will note since we paused that we, we will come back to the discussion of the Cituit Beach Association after the conclusion of this planning discussion, because we were ahead of schedule, and I wanted to make sure that, I know that some folks have jumped on for that, so we'll do that next. So may I go on now? To the discussion of the bylaw zoning requirement.
Right, so the signed by law is, this has been in the works for over a year. Was, you know, we didn't hear it at the, at the twenty twenty annual town meeting because we were doing just the budget due to COVID. But the signed by law is, is being totally replaced with a bylaw that complies with current case law. Right now, the Cituit zoning bylaw is unconstitutional, and so we are trying to change it so that it becomes constitutional. We add definitions, we talk about prohibited signs, temporary signs, maintenance of signs, and that's all been clarified in the, in the bylaw. We hired a consultant to do the bylaw, and town council has fully vetted this article twice.
That's terrific.
All her comments are incorporated in here.
Great, and as you know, this was postponed because of COVID, and we couldn't have a robust town meeting and didn't, didn't believe that a bylaw change should be done without that opportunity. So any questions? We have reviewed this many times. Are there any additional comments from the board? Okay. Then that will bring us to the last zoning by law revision to the fair housing and affordability standards.
All right, so this article is basically the changes to allow for more than five units in all districts to have affordable housing, with the requirement that land under common ownership for housing developments cannot be segmented to avoid this requirement. So right now, our zoning bylaw has a couple of districts, and the requirement for adding an affordable unit kicks in with eight or more housing units. So now what the board is asking to put it to all districts in town, any housing development, and six or more units will now require an affordable component. And the housing production plan has recommended this from the last one, two thousand and fifteen. The current housing production plan that was just accepted by the state in two thousand and twenty has recommended some type of inclusionary zoning so that we can attempt to make progress in meeting our goal of ten percent, which is mandated by the state.
Great, and this aligns also with all of the work that was done in the master planning, as well as the community very strongly noted that we needed to increase affordable housing options in that work, supported by community. Is there a ratio for, you know, if you have a larger development, is there a ratio component to this? I, I'm sorry, I don't remember seeing it.
Well, in the fair housing and affordability standards, we'll take the VCN, for example. If you apply for a project in the VCN and you're applying for a density bonus and you require affordable units, then you have to have twenty percent affordability.
Okay.
It's basically fifteen percent, but you know, the chart, the chart says six to, I think, ten units requires one. So the chart basically stays the same, and it's, it's generally fifteen percent or twenty percent unless you're, if you're having a density bonus and have to have affordable units.
Great. Thank you, Karen. Are there any other questions or comments about this proposed by law revision? Ms. Karen?
Just thank you. This is great. It's nice to see it changed. And it does apply to even a potential subdivision as well, right? If that had six units. Yeah, that's awesome. So thanks for doing this.
And just to clarify, which one call it, accessory dwellings don't count for affordable right now, right?
That's correct. I mean, we do have an affordable accessory dwelling provision, but we only have one, one of those in town because the paperwork is too cumbersome.
All right, that's a discussion for another day. Any other question, Ms. Conley?
Yeah, so to clarify, if you're building a subdivision with ten houses in it, would you have to build, and they're single family dwellings, would you have to build one house that is affordable? Yes, no?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. That's a big change.
Quite correct. That is a big change, but the town does need to meet its affordable housing goals, and by having a variety of housing types, that's kind of what the housing production plan, that's what the master plan, that's what every community needs.
I'm not disagreeing with the goal. I understand it, but I just want to be sure that I understand what the implications of it are. So, thank you.
Great. Any other questions on the planning zoning proposals put forth? We will discuss these later in the evening after our break. Further, for the board to vote on support or not support at town meeting. All right, thank you so much, Karen and Ann, for joining us and giving us that overview. And we.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ann.
We will now backtrack to the change of manager for seasonal license and the renewal of the seasonal liquor license for the Cituit Beach Association. And I, I think I saw Todd came on.
Yep, hello.
All right, yeah, sorry, we were ahead of schedule, so you got bumped.
No, that's okay. Sorry, I was not a little earlier.
You were, you were, you were right on time. We were just early. So we do, as everyone knows, the Cituit Beach Association, well, I'll let you, I'll let you walk us through what you guys are requesting.
Great, thanks, and thank you for the board for the time tonight. The Cituit Beach Association is requesting another seasonal liquor license. This year, we would request it goes from May first to January first with no changes of the hours. It's really just a renewal. The other reason we're here is Chris George has done a lot of great work for the SBA over the years. It was time for him to step down, and so I took his place as the bar manager on our liquor license. So I believe both of those are in place.
Yes, they are, and the board has received all the background. Obviously, there's a great deal of responsibility with that task. So we do have your backup information to, which is all in order, I believe. I will note that we did receive correspondence objecting to the, to the liquor license component for one individual. I just bring that to the board's attention if you did not see it in the backup. You know, you guys, how long has the Beach Association been in, in business, I guess?
Geez, it's gotta be going on close to a hundred years now. Some of the dates are fishy, but it's, it's been there, running strong since the forties, I believe.
Great, yeah, that's what I thought. So it's been longstanding in the community, in that, in that neighborhood. And I don't, Jim checked earlier this week, and I think that, I think maybe, what'd you say, two, two or three calls in the last five years about Beach Association had to do with noise complaints and.
The calls that the police received were noise complaints.
And it was immediately remedied by the association. Other than that, there's been no, no record of, of not being responsible on that site. So I just wanted to note that. Does anyone have any questions for Todd or about this application? No? Okay, Mr. Vignani?
The only thing I'll add is that they do a lot of very positive things for the community, too. I've been to a number of fundraisers there over the years. Most recently, probably our sister cities have had fundraiser there, Susie Ombri and, and Irish Sister City, as well as sports teams and other organizations in there. So that's, it's more than just a little network of, of local residents. It really expands out and helps the entire town, so.
Thank you, Mr. Vignani. Anything else from the board on this?
No, I just think it's good to publicly just note that, you know, Todd's been tip certified. So I know you said we had it in the backup, but I just wanted to say that publicly as well, so folks know that he's gone through all the proper training as well.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Karen, absolutely. Great, I do know that you do have some, some folks that have jumped on this call. I just want to open it up to the public to see if they, anyone would like to speak to this matter before the board goes any further. If you would like to, take yourself off, put your video on or raise your hand. And I don't see anybody. Okay. All righty, if there's no further discussion on this matter.
A motion. Move that the board of selectmen approve the application for a change of manager to Todd Glowak for the Cituit Beach Association, seasons all kinds of alcoholic beverage club license.
Moved by Mr. Vignani. Is there a second?
When I do them both.
Yeah, well, let's get the second by Ms. Karen. Would you care to make? Well, we already, it's your third. Yes, let's take both motions at the same time, please.
And then also move that the select board approve the renewal application for the twenty twenty one season liquor, common vicular and entertainment licenses for the Cituit Beach Association at eighty eight Cituit Ave for seasonal all kinds of alcohol beverages club license.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Is there any further discussion on either motion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Aye, aye.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Both motions passed, passed five zero unanimously. Thank you very much for bringing this to us, and I hope you have a wonderful season this year. We all have a wonderful season this year. And, and just be mindful that, you know, not everybody in, in the neighborhood is. And, and just be mindful that, you know, not everybody in, in the neighborhood is beloved by the, by the actions. So, just be mindful of your neighbors, as you always are.
Yeah. Thank you, and thank you all for your hard work at the town.
All right, thank you, Todd.
Thanks, Todd, you too.
All right. And I hope we all have a great summer. Okay, so now I'm all confused. We've done our 7:20, we're on to our 7:35, so we're still ahead of time. And Joan Schmidt, from our, our Assistant Board of Director, Health Director, is here to discuss a nitrogen load specification septic system. Joan, are you, I thought I saw you come in. Yep, you're here.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before we proceed, I have to, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion. What's the protocol when you're on?
You need to, I think, your video off.
Just take video and, okay.
Take your video off and, and hide in the corner.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
Yes, I think that's the, Joan will join us. We, we did receive our backup package a little late on this subject, well, on all subjects this week. So, I, I'm looking forward to hearing Joan's explanation. Joan, I know you're up, okay, you're unmuted.
Is there? Joan?
Joan, you're unmuted. Are you looking for your video?
I don't know if I can use the video.
Oh, that's fine, you don't, well, there you are.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. This is a document that has to go to the Board of Health. It also has to go to the conservation, and it also has to go to the selectmen, and then it has to be documented at the Plymouth D to Records. So, in 2017, at 132 Maple, they sectioned, they subdivided their land. So, what's before you tonight is 131 Maple, but we actually got the septic system for 132 because they didn't have a 131 Maple at the time in 2017. So, the health agent at the time had a septic system that was being presented for new construction at that property. She told the engineer that they didn't have enough land because we're in a wa, it's in a water resource location. So, it's a nitrogen-sensitive area. So, you, they needed 12,000 more square feet in order to be able to put in a septic system for this lot. So, the owner has been, you know, looking for land. It has to be in a water resource area. And the owner has been looking for the land since 2017. They found a piece of land on First Parish Road, which is 12,000 square feet, which is exactly what they need. They purchased that land. And this document that you have has to be put into a conservation restriction. So, because it's being used in the water resource area, they can't build on it, they can't have a pool on it, they can't have farmland. It stays as conservation restricted land. It butts up against wetlands as it is. So, it makes sense to have this particular piece of square footage being conservation. So, that's really it. So, once it gets approved, then we will approve the septic system for this lot. But we need, they need the nitrogen credits. They need, it's a nitrogen census every area, and you can't, you need the land in order to be able to put a septic system on this lot. Or you're actually giving the land back. You actually give them the 12,000 square feet back to the water resource area for nitrogen credits. Does that explain it? I mean, that's
It does, but can I, can I paraphrase that in, in? Just paraphrase it to make sure that I'm understanding this? So, essentially, it's, it's, it's just like wetland replication if you're doing a development, you, and you, and you want to. But it's not, how close is the, the First Parish property to where there, is it the same water resource?
It's up the street. So, so 131 Maple is below this piece of property. But I did check with DEP, and they said that this, it was fine, that they could use that for this first property. It's up near, it's on near Grove and First Parish Road.
Okay. And Jim, this is like energy. So, if you're, if you're over certain things, you can buy credits. This is basically buying credit so they can do something that is no, that really isn't allowable on that site.
Yeah, because you're putting the septic system so close to a resource area, you need to set aside a comparable piece of, I guess, kind of be more taking land out of 61A, you have to put something back in of equal value.
Correct. So, yeah, they have to have a certain amount of land in order to be able to build and have a septic system, so.
And I'll ask one more question. I opened the board, sorry. They, are you comfortable that the septic system proposed does not compromise our water system?
Yes, that was reviewed by the previous agent. This was the only issue that she had with it was the nitrogen credits.
Okay. Does the board have additional questions on this matter?
So, it are, just so you know, conservation has already looked at it, and the Board of Health has already approved it. So, the selectmen have to, selectmen make that decision, and then we move forward with it.
Okay, Mr. Ms. Conley and then Mr. Vignani?
Yes, so this is an acceptable solution to a problem where a piece of property could not be developed because of the closeness to the water resources area?
Well, the water resource area is a large area in Situate. It's designated on Oliver. So, yes, so because this is in a water resource area, they cannot build a septic system on this property unless they have a certain number of square feet to be able to do it.
So, other people could
Goes by gallons per, you know, it goes by, you know, bedroom count and gallons per day. That's, it's a technique, it gets into a lot of chemistry, but
Yeah.
Because it's nitrogen-sensitive area, you have to be able to have a certain amount of land.
Which they don't have.
Did not have, and that's why they needed another 12,000 square feet.
So, other people could conceivably do this?
Yeah, it's a Title V. It's Title V state regulation.
Okay.
In this form that you're going to be signing, what is a state form?
Okay.
And it will be registered with the deed of rock, Plymouth Registry of Deeds.
Mr. Vign, oh, sorry, Karen, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Mr. Vignani?
A, a couple of things. The first one is, I, I just have to say, I don't know enough about this to really vote it tonight. So, I would like to take a little bit of time to understand a little bit more. I think, as Karen was going, it seemed a little backwards, where you weren't allowed to build on this land because it's too close to the watershed. But if you give me a piece of land over here, then you can build on this piece of land that you're not supposed to build on. So, I don't
They have enough room for the house. They didn't have, it's, it's, and they meet all the setbacks for Title V with the septic. It's, um, it, they're actually, didn't have enough land for the septic system, not necessarily for the building.
Right, right, but that's the whole structure. The, the structure includes a septic system. So, it just seems convoluted to me, you know? If, if they didn't have that other land, it couldn't happen. So, all of a sudden, you go and you buy a piece of wetland from somebody else for a thousand bucks, and now you can build a, a house that we wouldn't normally let you build. So, that, it, it's, it's confusing to me, and I'm not someone that understands this stuff very well. The other question I had was, where, where exactly is this other piece of land? You said on, on First Parish in Grove. What is the, where is that?
So
What's the address?
It's behind 115, so it's, it's behind 115 Grove Street, but it's on First Parish Road. So, it's up in the back corner. We've looked at it, and I sent it to DEP, and they said the piece of land was fine for the septic system to be using that, so.
As a swap?
Correct.
Yeah, and you said that both
I don't think it's, it's wetlands. It butts the wetlands.
Okay.
But it will have a conservation restriction on it.
And I, is it boxed in somewhere, I'm assuming? It's not?
Yeah, you can't really get, you can't.
So, it's
Behind somebody, it's way behind somebody's house that they
Yeah, so it's a useless piece of property.
Right.
That they just purchased.
Right.
And you said the conservation and Board of Health both passed it because technically it does fit the Title V bylaw.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Okay, again, I, I'd just like to see if there's any way that we can look at this a little bit more, unless everyone else feels so comfortable with it. I, I just don't, I want to look into it and see if I can understand a little bit more.
Yeah, I, a question for you, Joan. I, as I noted when we started this discussion, is we, we had a little, we had our own technical difficulties and didn't get our package, our backup material with time to really ruminate on this, and it's, it is, as Tony says, something that we need to wrap our heads around. Is there a time sensitivity if we were to postpone this for a couple of weeks?
So, there are, there is a real estate transaction in process. We just got this, like, we've been waiting for them to purchase something for three years, so three or four years. And they did finally find something, and then they had to go through the process of the paperwork. So, we just really got this at the end of December. So, I don't, there is a real estate transaction in process, and that they're waiting for this to be finished.
Well, yeah, the board is certainly sensitive to that, but I, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Vignani that, you know, if we can put this, we can, we can put this on the next agenda, which is in two weeks. I think that, you know, it, it has implications that I think we all, not, not the specific, but the policy needs to, we just want to wrap our heads around it so that we can make an informed decision. Does anyone object to postponing a vote on this matter till our, I think it's March 23rd meeting? No? Okay. Are there any questions or comments for Joan? I will see if there are any, if there's anybody participating that wants to add a comment. Does the board have any additional questions or comments? No? Okay. Then I will invite anyone from the public if they would like to raise their hand or take their video off if they have any comments or concerns about the 131 Maple Street application about nitrogen septic limitations. Okay. I'm not seeing any hands raised. So, Joan, if you wouldn't mind, we'll probably ask you to come back. We'll put you early on the agenda, and we won't need to, you know, the board may obviously have some follow-up questions once we digest this information. But we'll visit. Okay. All right, thank you.
If you have any additional information, let me know.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
A vote would be good, whatever the official vote needs to be. It would be helpful.
We know we're postponing the vote for two weeks, Lorraine.
Yeah, but we still need the correct language.
Oh, oh, yeah. So, if you could work with Lorraine to make sure that we have the appropriate motion, should we decide that that's what we're going to do? Okay, she's nodding. Seth took you off already.
Oh, sure.
Um, great. And one other, you know, we will, obviously, one thing, I don't think we had, who, I, I forgot to ask this question earlier, I'm sorry. Who is responsible for putting the swapped piece into conservation? Is that the, how does that get affected?
So, the Board of Health will file it with the Plymouth Registry of Deeds.
Okay. So, we, it's in our, it's our court to get that. Okay. All right, great.
It has to go to the state, and it does have to go to the state after you, after you, if you approve it, then it goes to the state for approval, and then it comes back to us.
Yep. It goes through that process. Okay. All right, we will look forward to seeing you again in two weeks. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
All right. That brings us to our 745, which is the collective bargaining agreement for the firefighters' union. Jim, are you presenting, or is, oh, there's Bob, Mr. Clark, our human, our human resources director?
Everyone, excuse me. So, our collective bargaining agreement for the fire union expired on June 30th, 2020. So, we've been in the process of negotiating a successor collective bargaining agreement. Hopefully, we're looking to do a three-year contract. It's been hindered to some extent by COVID, but we've continued to bargain. We don't have a settlement at this point, so recently, the, the fire union approached us, they approached the town, and asked if we would be willing to, to agree on a one-year contract for FY21, which would be just a basic contract, which would, you know, 1.5% wage increase, general wage increase, one or two other sort of minor, sort of housekeeping cleanup language changes. So, we entered, we, we agreed, and we entered into a memorandum agreement with the fire union to do that. That would allow us to, to settle on this year, and then we can get back to the table and look at doing a, a longer-term contract for, beyond FY21. So, I'm presenting a memorandum agreement. It's been ratified by the, the fire union for 1.5% increase for FY21.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Other questions from the board? Ms. Conley?
So, I assume this means that, that pay increases are retroactive to July 2020?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board on this?
Yeah, just a question on the housekeeping thing. So, we're getting rid of biweekly pay. Is that, is that how we pay?
No, I mean, we had agreed at one point in time years ago, one of the contracts basically the union agreed that the town has the right to implement biweekly pay, which we did years ago. And so, it's really just sort of unnecessary language. I mean, so we're just looking to clean up the, the contract. So, so we're continuing to do biweekly pay, but it just, it just wasn't really necessary to, to make that reference in the contract.
Okay. And the transitional language?
The trans, so a few years ago, we had actually, we used to actually allow, we used to give firefighters the sick leave accrual on an annual basis, and we changed that to a monthly basis. So, when we made that change, we had to create some language that basically talked about how we did that. It's, so it was really as we transitioned into monthly. So, that's the basis for how we do accruals now. So, again, it's just, we're just looking to remove some language that just is really unnecessary in the contract.
Okay, thanks for explaining, Bob.
And then, of course, you're immediately on to the next negotiation, right?
Correct, right.
Any other questions for Bob about this matter? All right. Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion? Uh, Ms., oh, sorry. Karen, I think you're muted.
Who muted me? Motion to approve the collective bargaining memorandum of agreement for the Situate Firefighters Union Local 1464 Bargaining Unit.
Motion by Ms. Conley, is there a second? Second by Ms. Karen. This requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you to Bob and Jim and everyone, and Nancy, who have participated and will continue to participate in the collective bargaining process. So, appreciate that. It is a very necessary but involved endeavor, and we appreciate it. And bless you, Nancy. Great. Thank you, Bob. We are, we're just buzzing along. Do we have Mike Manchella on? Is he here? He is. Oh, great, Mike. We're, we're welcome to stay later, but we have as our 755, a discussion vote on the virtual server infrastructure contract. And so, I will let, I'll turn it over to you, Mike, if you'd like to just give the overview. This is an item that we've been discussing for a while, but I'd like to hear a little more.
Well, so, the, the proposal in front of you is for our new virtual infrastructure, which is the physical hardware that all of our servers reside on. Every piece of data that we, that we have, whether it be MUNIS, our file shares, email, not so much email anymore, we actually migrated, I, I'm sorry. INC, which is a police application, fire, fire departments applications, everything in town resides on this hardware. Manufacturer has announced, I'll back up a little bit further. We bought the hardware. It was a Dell product with another technology called Simplicity in it. Hewlett Packard bought the, the, the technology, the Simplicity technology, and then announced that they were no longer going to support this, this platform that we have, Dell hardware in combination with Simplicity. They gave us some dates, and the last town meeting, we got some approval, we got approved to, for the funds to replace the infrastructure. And here we are, this is the And here we are, this is the proposal to replace that infrastructure. I can get into the details of what a virtual infrastructure is if you'd like, if you have any questions on the technology.
I personally won't ask those questions because I don't understand the answers, but this was voted as an appropriation at town meeting. And this is the culmination of that approval. Are there any tech savvy people that have a question on this matter? I will note that it's been in the news a lot this week and, I'm sorry, Tony, go ahead.
Just wanted to know what we appropriated, what was, I see the price is 122. Do you know what we appropriated?
Off the top of my head, it was just over 200, right? Nancy's looking at it right now.
And is this the total amount that we saved?
No, this is going to be the total amount for this particular vendor. This will be the largest amount. Some, there'll be some other purchases, much smaller in scale than this.
But we're on budget.
Yeah, we actually will come in a little bit under.
Appropriated 260,000.
215?
260. But feel free to work with the 215 budget.
Nancy, are you sure about that? I don't.
Mike, you're challenging Nancy?
I know, but I'm.
He's giving you money there, dude.
All right.
He's noticing that my glasses are on top of my head and he's right, it's, it's 205, 398.
Yeah.
Oh.
Type style six and it's on the door.
Whoa.
Catch, Mike.
Real close this week.
So now go down to 195 and that's your new budget.
Great. Well, good, good job trading in the equipment too, the old equipment, Mike. That's not always easy to get those, those guys to take that stuff and so.
Yeah, no, it was a great, it was a great deal. They, they, they're trying to keep track of their technology. There's some special sauce that's highly patented in this tech, in this infrastructure that we have. And they want it back. So they're, they're offering the rebates to take the equipment back, so.
Yeah, what I was gonna note is that, you know, it's been all over the news the last couple of weeks of how municipal governments have been targeted and then vulnerable to, to cybersecurity issues. So I just want to thank you for, you know, really, you know, manning the gates for us. It really has, it really, it does, definitely gives me peace of mind, so thank you. It's worth, it's definitely worth the investment.
We're, we're, you know, it's, it's always a risk, our biggest, with, I think it's 90% of all breaches happen from, by an accident, somebody clicking on a link and, or as I always say, we're one click away from a digital disaster. So it's, that's why the security awareness training is so critical. And, you know, I've, I've got fantastic support from Jim on making that happen and making everybody go through that training. So that, that's a huge piece of it.
Yeah, same in the board that hasn't done it, you're supposed to.
We just received another grant for that, for phase two. We'll, we'll actually be doing more, so as Mike said, it's, it's really good training. And the state will send you phishing emails to see if you click. And if you click, then you take, get taken immediately to another set of training videos to figure out what you did wrong. So the first round was great, I'm thinking the second round's gonna be as good. But as Mike said, the intrusions come when people download the wrong stuff, click on the wrong stuff, open the wrong stuff. So we can just make sure all our employees are aware of what those look like. We can save ourselves a lot of heartache and trouble later on.
Great. Any other further questions on this matter from the board? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to award a contract to CyberNorth LLC for the purchase and replacement of the town's virtual server infrastructure in an amount not to exceed $122,194.73 and to trade in the town's existing three Dell slash Simplicity CN2400s for credit towards the purchase.
Well, by Ms. Conley, is there a second? Okay, second by Mr. Goodrich. This matter requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you for all your work on this and look forward to, to getting this all completed.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mike. That brings us to our 810. I did see Mr. Cafferty join us, even though we're ahead of time. And that's to discuss the Phase Four water. Yes.
Not that I want to make Kevin wait, but you did skip over our full and talented police chief.
Oh, my goodness, I would never, I, thank you, I stand corrected. Sorry, Chief Thompson?
Absolutely, no worries, I appreciate it.
And it's such a good topic too. We are, I did miss it because I was so excited, we were ahead of time. Our 805 is an acceptance of equipment donation from Mr. William Hale, whom I did note was also in our participants. So.
Is also on the call with Chief Thompson.
Okay, great. I apologize and I will turn it over to all of you because this is a very exciting presentation.
Well, well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. In the notes that, that you saw, we were talking about our department's K-9 program, which has been in existence since 2006. It's been, now we're going to be hitting our 15th year with this program. Sergeant McLaughlin has been the steward of this program since the beginning. We've had a couple of K-9s over the course of time. And throughout, I think a lot of people in the community have, have seen the K-9s working. They've seen the unbelievable job that, that Brian has done over the years as well. And for our department, it's, it's truly an incredibly huge asset. We want to make sure that we're able to continue this program and keep things moving. Mr. Hale of the Marley Foundation is somebody that we've worked with over the past several years. He's been an unbelievable partner for the department. If you all recall, a couple of years ago, we had a new radar trailer with a signboard that came with it and also some virtual driving training for the youth in town to help them understand what it's really like driver safety and thing. So Mr. Hale has been unbelievably generous and has come forward and said that he'd really like to help out with keeping the K-9 program going in donating basically equipment, ongoing support. And we are getting to a point that K-9 Tango is going to be up for retirement. So we want to make sure that we're able to keep things going. So the Marley Foundation, if you didn't have an opportunity to take a look at it, it's really pretty amazing what they're doing and the different places that they're able to benefit. So Mr. Hale is a resident, was a business owner in Situate. And there's a great connection for us here and for the community. So we're really incredibly excited about having the opportunity to continue the good work that Sergeant McLaughlin has done over the years. You know, and again, be able to partner with Mr. Hale, who's, who's on and I'm sure who can speak much, much better about the foundation than I'm able to.
Okay, thank you all very much for having me on tonight. And the Marley Foundation, I started it in 2015. I was, I moved into Situate in 1988, started my business AJA International, which still exists and is headquartered at 809 Country Way. I sold that to my son last year. After 31 years, I was worn down from the COVID thing, but I left him in good hands and got him all set up. I've done the Marley Foundation since 2015. Named it after my yellow lab of 14 and a half years, who was by my side all over the country. And I go back and forth a lot to the West Coast. And since that time, we've done about $500,000 in scholarships for special operations forces, Navy SEALs and Army Rangers. And I work a lot with the Navy SEAL Museum. We're going to be doing a K-9 for them, for PTSD afflicted Navy SEAL this spring. And I've known Officer Billings and met Officer McLaughlin recently and about their need, because I called them, I said, if you guys need something, I know times might be tough, funding might be tough, we're happy to help you. And he immediately mentioned the K-9 need and possible crate. I would want to make sure there's a vest for the dog too, a safety vest, given the type of circumstances a dog might find itself in. So I'm happy to make this donation, been around forever, gonna be around. I'm kind of half in retirement, back and forth between Tahoe and, and Situate, but I'll be spending half my time in Situate. So hopefully you guys will consider this and I'll be happy to do it for the town and the kids in the town especially.
Well, Mr. Hale, I am certain that other board members are going to want to, to speak about this matter, but I would like to just say, I did have an opportunity to look and I, I've been aware of your work and your foundation for a while and, and it's extraordinary, your commitment and we were honored that you have, you know, you have committed, continued your commitment to our community. It, it, it really, it really is appreciated and goes so far into our little town. And, you know, you've done so much already and we really appreciate it. So I know that the others, there are others that want to add to this, but did, did Sergeant McLaughlin, did you want to add anything before I asked the board to?
Yeah, we, we're very grateful for Mr. Hale's contribution and support as long as, as well as the remain of rest of the town. And we'd like to just continue on providing this support to you all and to the community. It's been, it's very, been very successful throughout the years and I'm happy to continue on doing it.
One thing I'd, one thing I'd like to mention in addition, as a result of my lunch with Officer Billings and Officer McLaughlin, they explained to me how the K-9 would be used for finding Alzheimer's victims that are wandering off and would basically not be able to find their way home and that they've been quite successful at. My mom was Alzheimer's, you know, she was afflicted with Alzheimer's and I know what that situation is like and I'm even more bung ho for this because of that.
You're pointing that out, yeah. Sergeant?
Yeah, we've had numerous calls for service for that throughout the area and very successful. It's, it's very taxing on the family members where, you know, the time is of the essence. And when you're able to provide that service in a timely fashion, it's, you know, you can only imagine putting yourself in that scenario that, you know, how much, how much scary it can be. So, you know, we are trained enough in tracking and locating all people with their, you know, whether it's missing or anybody that the police are actively looking for. But we really do pride ourselves on seeking, locating the missing people, whether Alzheimer's or a child juvenile.
Thank you. I'll open it up, I know that other folks have comments they'd like to make. Who would like to start? Mr., oh, I saw Mr. Goodrich first.
Yeah. Serendipitously, I, I emailed Mr. Hale just last week. He might be one of the most interesting, nicest and smartest people I've ever met. And I mean that sincerely. And knowing what the Marley Foundation has done, closing in on a half a million of donations, the employees who have spoken so highly of him, in AJA doing things, which the town should know more about, these machines, I still don't understand how they're making these. I, the science behind it is just fascinating, things off in space that we're making, it's unbelievable. His love of dire straits and music, he's just, I can't say enough and how thankful for him to be part of our community. It's just, and when this COVID business is over, I hope I could get, you know, see AJA again and just, and see what we can do to help the Marley Foundation because it's just fabulous. So just thank you, I'm sorry to be so effusive, but I, I do mean it.
Well, one, one last thing I'd like to say is that my intention this summer was to get focused on perhaps doing some scholarships in Situate High School and bringing some of the Situate students, especially in higher science such as physics and chemistry, into our building where they could see what we do, which is essentially atomic spray painting. We can deposit a layer of atoms of virtually all materials that don't break apart in the process onto anything. And they're used by NASA, they're used by the military, they're used in every computer, every flat screen, every touchscreen. We make the research systems that scientists use to develop new applications. And we've done it since 1989 and I did it for a few years before that, before I started. And what we do is we design stuff and we have it assembled. A lot of the assembly is going on in Hanover right now and headquarters is at 809 Country Way. And the across the street are office buildings and that's pretty much it. So, but having the kids come over and doing scholarships, not only for STEM scholarships, because I'm a science guy, but I'm also a music guy. And, and one of my favorite guys in the, in the scholarships that I do for the SEALs is a young man who's got a, going for a fine arts degree. And he sent me his project for public transportation in Detroit, Michigan. And he sent me this because I've supported him for a few years. And I love it all, I love it all. So STEM and non-STEM, Situate High School, next spring.
We will, we'll call you on that, sir.
Absolutely, call me on it. I got roped into managing a golf club out here in Tahoe for this coming year, but, but I wanted to do something else.
Well, maybe we'll come visit you there then.
I will make that happen for sure, but we gotta get those kids in there to see that stuff and understand a little bit about vacuum technology because it's all around you, you don't even understand it. You don't even know it and, and it's easy, it can be explained to the layman.
Great, oh my gosh. This is, I, we so appreciate, we could talk to you all night, but fortunately we have a high, a big agenda ahead of us. So would anyone else from the board like to make a comment before we? Thank you.
Just a big thank you, Mr. Hale, thank you very much. And we look forward to seeing the new K-9. Is it second generation guys, second one we've had or a third?
It'd be this, the third.
Third?
Great.
Clever name.
If there's no further discussion on this matter, I will entertain a motion if someone would like to make one.
Move that the select board accept a donation of equipment to the Town of Situate Police Department by Mr. William Hale on behalf of the Marley Foundation in support of the department K-9 program.
Move by Ms. Karen, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Goodrich is second and we are remote, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with our appreciation and gratitude to your, for your donation. Thank you so much.
My pleasure, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it, thank the board and Mr. Hale and the Marley Foundation, truly our gratitude, thank you.
My pleasure, absolutely, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Will.
Bye-bye, take care.
All right.
Good night.
Good night. Now, I will move on to Mr. Cafferty, who is here to discuss the water, the, the Phase Four A water replacement.
Excellent, thank you. So we went out to bid, oh, first of all, we, you know, I think Jim brought it up before. We have been doing flushing in the North Situate Minored Areas. It's been successful so far. We've got a couple of message boards out showing, you know, telling people that we're doing it and we still get calls, people saying they had no knowledge of it. Jim brought it up and, you know, but if people do have any prolonged brownwater or anything else, let us know. And, and we'll, if somebody out there will address it and find out what's going on. But so far, so good from what we've done so far this week. So this contract is, we pushed it off a bit because of COVID. It's one of two water projects that'll be going out this year. This takes care of a lot of the small two-inch galvanized lines that we've been talking about for a long time. It also takes care of the Utility Road neighborhood. And I'm not sure who recalls, but we've had quite a few water breaks on Utility Road and that whole neighborhood. And it's gonna make some huge improvements to it. We had, I believe, 13 bidders. Our low bidder was Selco Construction Corp. We did three phases, we did a base bid, we did add alternate A and then add alternate B. And I will explain how that worked out. The base bid is to install the water pipe and then we would come after about a week and put a paving coat on top of that. It's, this is specifically in the Utility Road neighborhood. The second alternate includes grinding and then paving the trench out. The third alternate includes doing the complete roads over in the Utility Road neighborhood because one of the fears we had is there's not a lot of asphalt there and we don't believe it'll hold up too well to the water project. So we're gonna do completely new roads in that area.
So I'm sorry, Kevin, to interrupt, but is that, did you say, so all three adults would be able to be included?
That's what we're doing, all three adults.
And is it, is it a year later that you come back with the grind, full grinding?
Typically, you know, it all depends how quickly the contractor gets everything done. Sometimes if they're willing to guarantee it, that there won't be any settlement and the roads hold up really well. We might let them do it in the fall, but it, you know, it all depends on what type of soils we hit when we're doing these projects.
Okay. Sorry. Did you have more interrupted you?
No, I think I covered everything unless anybody had any questions.
Does anyone from the board have any questions about this contract? Ms. Curran?
I just have a quick question, Kev. Is there a difference, you know, when you're replacing the, the big water mains and the two-inch with regards to the road repair? Or are we going to see a similar type of repair after the replacement of the two-inch pipes around town?
Sorry, I don't, I don't know if I understood the whole question. Will we see an improvement with water flow?
So what type of road repair will happen when you replace the two-inch galvanized water service? Is it, should we expect the same as when you do the larger water main replacements that you have? So you have the top six big projects right at the top?
Yes.
And then in the bottom, you have all the other smaller roads that you're going to hit, all those two-inch galvanized water services?
So that would typically be paved. It'd probably be a seven-foot wide trench that we would seal and make up similar to the existing road, match the existing road. There are three roads, I believe it's Cricket, True Place in Young's Lane that has some fairly recent asphalt that we were just going to do overlays on. So we would do the whole road either it's the width of the road or the road isn't in great shape. Did that answer the question?
Yep. Thank you.
Other questions about this for Mister Cafferty? Not, this, obviously, this, this phase is discussed in the water study that we received a while ago. And I just wanted to make note that we, we, we paused on discussing the water study review because we needed time to review it and it's been a while. So I think that if the board agrees, I think that we should put that on an upcoming agenda to have a chance to have a public review of that document because we've had plenty of time to read it now. Does anyone disagree with that? Nope. We got head shaking. So Kevin, just letting you, giving you a heads up, that's coming.
I will be ready. We're all set for it. We've, we've gone over it. And, you know, as a matter of fact, today we met and started meeting with the owner's project manager on treatment plan because we've been reviewing the RFPs we received on, on that. So we're moving forward with all suggestions and everything else. We'd gladly be ready to act on that.
Okay, great. Yeah, you were ready. We weren't ready. So we need to revisit that. So are there any other further questions about this contract? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Oh, Tony, your mouth is moving, but you're muted.
I'm trying to get to that page.
There you go. Thanks.
Under if you want me to go.
That'd be great.
That the board has selected a contract for phase four A of the water main rehabilitation project to Selco Construction Corporation of Pembroke, Mass. for $2,845,439.70.
Moved by Ms. Curran. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mister Goodrich. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mister Vignali?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mister Goodrich?
Yes.
Great. The motion carries five zero. Go forth and repipe.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin. Our next side, I see Mister Gallagher has joined us. Our next item is scheduled for eight twenty. We're just cruising today and thank you for being early. It's my father said, if you're not fifteen minutes early, you're late. And I see that Penny has joined us, but I do not see Frank. And as Frank is on the agenda as presenting, is Penny doing that or should?
I believe Frank is joining us. I just spoke with him and I'm wondering if he's iPad.
Oh, Frank, if you're iPad, would you please raise hand by using the reactions icon on the bottom of your screen?
We did ask iPad to unmute.
You've been unmuted if you.
Am I unmuted?
iPad is talking. Is that you, Frank?
Yes. Let's see if I can get an audio. I haven't used this for meetings. Sorry about that.
This is fun. Okay. So Frank Snow is on, he's chair of our conservation commission, Mister Gallagher and.
Penny is there as well.
Great. Gentlemen, so this is a new and exciting thing. Who would like to tee us up?
So I thought maybe I could just explain how we got to this point.
Okay, please, Frank.
So as you know, we, we've constructed parking and access roads into various properties. And the one that goes into Appleton Field now allows us to get back to the field, which we would have not had access to for some time. And so the Appleton Field area was cleared and farmed up until about four years ago. And so there's still some great opportunities there to, to create a community garden and possibly some other pieces. And Andy's taken on that project. And maybe it'd be better if he explained from here.
Thanks, Frank. Yes, as Frank said, I think we have a pretty unique opportunity or a special opportunity out at Appleton Field. It's been used for farming for many years. It's a great piece of land for farming. And I think we can open it up to the community. So the plan that we are working on, and I see there are a few folks in the audience who have been working on this with me and I appreciate them being here, is to carve out a space in the field for community gardening. As most of you probably know, there is currently community gardening happening at Teak Sherman. They filled up last year, so they've sort of reached capacity there. And there's a big opportunity to expand for folks who are interested over at Appleton. So the plan would be to have some community gardening there. As we divide the field, we would certainly want to have some areas that provide sort of volunteer opportunities, educational opportunities to kids and school age, to adults. And similar to Teak Sherman, have some portion of the, the produce being grown at the field be provided to the Cituit Food Pantry, which has been done at Teak Sherman for many years. So that would be the plan, but it's a, it's a huge property. So even with a very ambitious growth of community gardening, if this thing exploded beyond our wildest dreams, there's still a lot of room out there that can offer some good farming to someone in the community. So the second portion of the plan that we're working on is to find, provide a license to a commercial grower to use some of that space as well. My vision would be to have that sort of complement the community gardening effort and to work on a proposal and sort of recruit a grower or farmer who, you know, is going to do organic because it is a sensitive area, a piece of conservation land, who prioritizes sort of ecology and ecological health and who wants to work kind of alongside and in collaboration with the community gardeners out there. I think there's probably a system that can be devised where, you know, part of the, the fee structure, if you would, is to have them do some of the maintenance and some of the work that allows for the community use as well. Have those be complimentary. So we've been putting that together. On the community gardening side, I think it's, you know, we'd really want to sort of carry on what they've been doing at Teak Sherman. That's worked very well. The rules they have in place, the procedures they have in place are all working well. Some of the folks who have been leaders at Teak Sherman are on board to kind of carry it, carry this forward and, and continue growing community gardening at Appleton Field. And so that is essentially the plan. The, there are a couple of expenses that would be, that we're looking into as a commission. Now we need a fence, you know, for deer at the field if we're going to have significant growing and a water source as well. But so we're looking at those factors now. But if we can get those things going, I think there's a real opportunity to bring people together, you know, to, as a, as a growing community and people, give people space to grow their own food in town, to create more access to local produce and to provide some educational opportunities out there.
Right. Thank you, Andy. I really appreciate you coming and updating us on this because it's, it's, I personally am super excited about this, this use and about the potential. Obviously, you know, our job is the devil in details, so there's going to be a lot of I'm glad you're not starting from scratch. That's huge, but obviously this is something that, that just needs to go through the process so that we have, you know, I hate to say it because it's government speak, but policies and procedures and all of that stuff in place. So we look for, what are you looking at as far as timeline for the next steps on this?
Yeah, I'm feeling some urgency. As Frank said, it's been a few years since the field was used for farming. And so, you know, with each growing season, some of the invasive species, you know, continue to take over and it's going to take more resources to bring it back to a, a growing space. And I think there's some eagerness now with some folks involved. So, you know, I think if, if we're kind of following the blueprint of Teak Sherman, that the community growing space is going to be easier to get off the ground to start. The sort of less, less details to worry about there if we follow that blueprint. So that might be maybe something we can look at for this season, although it's coming up quickly on us. The, the commercial use, I think, is perhaps at least a season off as we get those details lined up because that's going to take some, some more work.
Okay, procedurally, I just, I want to ask Frank or Penny, is this something that needs to be blessed by the Conservation Commission before it comes to us in the final form? I would think.
Karen, I think that that would be a good thing. We've already been discussing it with the commission and, and the members are on board. We're, we're excited about this. And I, I think that we could take a formal vote or something to that effect for you to take a look at. We, we, Amy and Andy and I would have had a discussion with, with Jim some. And as you say, there are the devils in the details, but the good news is we have the Teak Sherman Field already, things worked out, agreements are in place. We have a good format and, and we have the folks that have been helping out at Teak Sherman, willing to jump in here. So I think we're not going in this blindly. I think it's already moved along pretty well. As Andy said, a commercial grower would have to get an RFP and, and get more information before we launched into that. So that's not going to be this season. But hopefully by next season and then details like fencing and water will see the interest. We get a good idea from this season how much interest there is and what folks are willing to do. And then, then we can look to improve on that. So we're, we're hopeful, this, this group that would like to use it is really hopeful that they could turn over some of this ground this season. And I think we can do something with that using the, the format of Teak Sherman.
I see our conservation officer has joined us. Amy, did you want to add anything to this?
Well, I mean, like, like they said, I, I think that this aspect of it is something that, as Andy said, you know, we're eager to get going this season if possible. But one of our, you know, our goals tonight was to try to get the message out to you and to the, the rest of the town that this is going on because we definitely want everybody to feel included in the opportunity to go out there and, and participate. You know, we don't want it to just be something that's only the people in the know. So anyways, in, in further, you know, it would be run all by volunteers. Actually, like Teak Sherman, I have very minimal if any involvement in. It's all volunteer, so I would expect that this would play out in that same way. At least, I mean, I, you know, that would be what my expectation would be. But of course, you know, it's on Conservation Commission land. And, and I do agree that it's important to have established rules and policies out there because, you know, we don't want it to get out of control or out of hand or left with any liabilities that are unforeseen. So I see that, you know, we have Holly Hill on the farm, I mean, on the, on the call too, who has a lot of experience with this, so maybe he can jump in too. And Andy also has a map showing the, the land.
Yeah, that was going to be my question. Obviously, we'll need to see that. And how many, how many, I don't know if it's plots or how many sites would you, are we thinking acreage wise or numbers wise?
I think we can screen share.
I can, yeah. I have, we have a good map of the field. I can share my screen here.
Well, when he's pulling that up, I have a ton of questions. So I don't know if, if, if they're going to be submitting a little bit more detailed information for a later date. I'm just trying to wrap my head around what's being asked of us tonight.
We're, we're not looking for a vote. We just wanted to get some feedback from you. And if you have some good input that we could consider on how we can get this off the ground for this spring season coming up for at least the community guarding portion of this. Like if you're comfortable with the direction that we're heading with this, that, that type of thing.
Okay.
The other thing we could do fairly quickly, I would say in the next week or two, we just have to change up some of the verbiage from the Teak Sherman one, but we could get the information out to, to your board. It's like four pages or six pages of rules and sign up and, and requirements of the people that do that. It's pretty straightforward and, and we're certainly happy to share that so that you could see the detail that's already been put together.
Yeah, Frank, we'll need, definitely need that. Yeah.
Yeah, except questions about parking, you know, it's a really large plot of land, which is awesome, but access, because I'm not clear exactly. I see the map, but I have all sorts of questions. Yeah.
Yeah, there was.
Go ahead, Nina.
There was an earlier question about the, the scope of it. So this is a, a map that was done for an NRCS report several years ago where they divided the field into sections. What we're looking at to start the community space is that the, the top part of field one, which would be closest to the parking lot, you know, you enter from the, from the north and the parking lot is just off, if you're looking at the screen to the right of, of the corner of field three there. I mean, quick math, if you had ten by ten plots, which is the size that you have at Teak Sherman, you could have 140 plots just in that half section of field three. So there's, I mean, there's tons of space. That would be wildly ambitious to think we'd have that many growers in the first few years. So there, there's a lot of space to be shared, I think, between community and other use.
So is this right when you walk, is this the Damon feel like when you go down that, that parking lot that's there to the left? You walk in, there's the big open field right there. Is that the space we're speaking of?
Exactly.
Okay.
No, it's not Damon. This is, this is Crosby.
Yep. Or Crosby. That one down, when you're going down clap, it's on the left. And you, you have a nice new paved road with all that, that area?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. It's a great area. So, okay. Sorry, I just wanted to get my bearings.
Okay. Thank you, Ma. Yeah, we definitely, that's the devil in the details that we need to flesh out. Ms. Conley?
Yeah, I just had a couple of observations. Who is running Teak, Teak Sherman right now?
So it's being led by a number of volunteers. I think some, many of them are on the call. I see John Belber is here, Jean Schildneck is here, Ken Swart. So there, there's a, there's a crew officially sort of in charge of running it.
So the, the good news is they have experience doing this. I guess my second question is, there, there are a lot of details, but water, how does this, do we have water up there? Will these, will, will, is there irrigation that will be necessary? I mean, we've just gone through a lot with the Water Resources Committee about trying to, you know, reduce the amount of water that's being used. So, you know, has anyone been to Water Resources to talk to them? And I just want to make sure that whatever bylaw we're adopting with Water Resources doesn't preclude you because I think the language we included exempted the town if it's necessary for athletic fields. But I'm not sure, you know, that we shouldn't add something about community gardening, et cetera. So.
I do think, I think there is something Karen in there about agriculture, so we'll have to go back and check that.
Well, I just want to make sure we're not finding ourselves unable to do something we want to do. And then Frank knows that I know this. There was real trouble with the tenant up there, so the last tenant. So I hope we're going to be mindful of that and that whoever the other commercial people might be, that there.
that they're more agreeable.
Can I jump in for one second? So I, I absolutely agree, Karen, that the commission learned a lot from, from that experience. We learned how to, we can't do a lease, it's a license. There's, there's a number of different pieces to do with that. And we certainly would put a lot more time into an agreement with any kind of commercial farmer. And, and as Andy said, you know, it's all going to be organic and no GMO and it would be really thoughtful about that process. Right now, is in terms of, so that's, and that's why we're going to push that out a bit to, to figure that out. Right now at Teak Sherman, people bring their own water. I think there's a water spigot. They did a water connection so they could have a hose or something. Penny, am I?
Yes, there, there is water up there.
So for, for the Appleton one, at least for this season, people are going to have to bring in their own water. Maybe we can get some water barrels or something, but there's really no place, much of a place for water to be collected.
Frank.
Yep.
Thing we could do, the first year at Teak Sherman, the water department had, had these big tanks and they would fill, fill them up for us. But we, we had to transport them from the water department up to Teak Sherman. And then the, the gardener's use that water. And this gardening, they use it very sparingly. John Belba, you don't overwater, you know, you only do what you absolutely have to do. But that's how, how we handled the water problem in the first year at Teak Sherman was had those big containers and have somebody go pick it up with a trailer, dump it off. And then, you know, the volunteers took care of that.
Okay, well, I think, I mean, this is exactly the sort of detail, devil in, am I, devil in the details that we'd love the board would like, I'm certain would like to see you guys flesh out. So if we could just get a, a general feedback on, on the concept and then send you off to do the homework, I think that would be really useful. I, I, I will happily tell you that I think this is an extraordinary opportunity to expand educational and community gardening. And it, it just checks a lot of the boxes and a lot of things that, you know, were highlighted in our master plan process of what's important to our community. So I personally think that, you know, drill down and get, get all the bugs worked out and, and bring that back. But I think that it's definitely worth the effort. And I know that, you know, I could just see from the faces here that, you know, these are, the volunteers that you've already got interested are committed and, and dedicated people that actually will get this thing off the ground. So I will, I'd like to take the temperature of the rest of the board. I'm, I'm just one of five. Would anyone like to comment?
Yeah, I agree, Karen. I think it's a great idea and so supportive, but I would love to see a lot of it flushed out a little bit. So we can help you communicate it properly too, right? We can't really communicate it out there without knowing more of the details. But yeah, if we can get it going through the summer, awesome.
Anyone else like to comment, Mr. Goodrich?
Yeah, I mean, I, this is not only, you know, would I support this, but this is the sort of thing, I think we should encourage residents to think about how to use this land use in a good way. And I certainly appreciate the comments about, you know, water use and using the rain barrels and having that. It'd be great to have those discussions and continue to have those going forward. But I think this is a, it could be a great, great opportunity. So, yeah, this is, love it.
All right. Mr. Venani?
Yeah, I, I again, agree with those guys in terms of the project itself. The one thing that I, I was surprised by is the number that you said, the number of 10 by 10 lots that you could possibly have. It seemed, you know, just baby steps to get going and before we, you know, go to that full capacity, which could be many, many, many people. So that's the only thing I would suggest to ease into it and, and see where it goes.
Right, and I know that a lot, there's a lot of experience on that, but yeah, I had the same thing, red flags of traffic and neighbors getting upset. So that's why we had to vet these things out. So, but I think you have a good team together to, to do that next step. So Karen, did you want to add anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Belber, did you want to add anything or anyone else that's participating in this meeting? Like to add anything about this project? Well done. We'll get you, John, hold on. Seth, can we, Holly Hill Farm?
Yeah, yeah. John, you should be good now. John, no.
It's red.
John, I want you, John, just unmute yourself, just down the bottom left-hand corner. See it there?
There we go.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you very much for considering this opportunity. It's, it's a big lift. We were very fortunate to have the support at the early stages there at Teak Sherman with, with funds to help with fencing and then water and initial turning of the field. This is a, this is a much bigger lift and, and Andy Gallagher and Frank speak about, we hardworking volunteers. It would, it will and would be a lot to, to transition this, this dormant land, as Andy said, has been sitting fallow for four years and nature abhors the vacuum and it really is quite quick for it to, for weeds and invasives to, to take. This is no light, light task and, and needs a lot of attention. As, as you said, the, the devils in the details as well as just the person power. It would be great to move ahead faster with the commercial aspect. I understand all the different processes that have to happen, but the more attention that one could give to this open field, then the, then the faster and better and, and less of a difficult task. I mean, farming is hard work and these are hardworking volunteers taking this on. So we'll get to work on the, on the assignments and are pleased to have the opportunity to grow and how important that is for our neighbors who can purchase food at future farmers markets or restaurants as well as people who use the food pantry. Important, good task and hard work.
Well, thank you for, for contributing this process because we know how experienced you are. So, all right, well, we will, we appreciate you coming in. We will send you off to do some homework and, and hopefully have you back soon to, to really vet out the, the proposal.
Thanks for giving us the time this evening. Thank you.
Oh, always, Frank, thank you. Great, Dan, I see you're on. I know you weren't on when I, at the start of the meeting, when the, the board decided that because we're going to have, this is going to take a little while, we're going to take our five-minute break that, because we've been sitting in our seats for two hours. So we're going to ask you to just hang on and we'll be back in five minutes.
Okay, I'll be here.
All right, thank you so much. The music's off, that must be our, our time's up.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
All right, let's see. We've got Mara, Karen, all right, the board's back, Jim's back. We got Dan, we've got Skylar, all right. If we are ready to reconvene, it is, we are now on to the 8:25 discussion and vote about the annual, special and annual town meeting scheduled for April 12th, coming up fast. And the first issue, or I guess first subject that we'd like to cover is our CPC review. And with that, we have the chair of our CPC, are you the acting chair I saw on the? Forget it, we're not letting.
I'll always be acting.
Our chair of the CPC, Mr. Fenely. So I will turn it over to you to walk us through. Obviously, we have, we've been discussing a number of these things for a while, but we'd love to hear where your board is on, on these matters.
Okay, so thank you very much for having us and giving us the opportunity to present this information to the board. If you have the handout or the briefing document that I have in front of you, I'm not going to go through everything in there, but just highlight some of the things that I think is important for you to know about. And if you have any questions, please stop me. From last year, the CPC revenue that was collected by the town was $1.695 million with some other minor adjustments to that and a state fund match of $523,000. We ended up with the estimated revenue for 2022 at $2.266 million. What that means is we need to, by law, reserve 10% for historic preservation for open space and for community housing. So each of those three entities or three funds would get $226,000 and change. We have the ability to have the administrative expense. We've always taken the minimum amount that we have and I'm not sure we've ever used that much, but that's part of what goes into the town meeting. If we could back up a couple of slides. I'm not sure who's driving the bus here, but if we could back up two more slides.
All right, I'm trying here. Yeah, I'm, this is from our backup and one of the beautiful things about the forum is we can do this.
One more slide.
All right.
So we had a problem last year, but it was a good problem. We didn't, we got more money than we expected. So again, we had a shortfall of the 10% reserve that we're required to do. So each of those three buckets, we were short $36,075. So that has to go into the town meeting vote to appropriate that money for those three funds, historic, open space and community housing. So that was a good problem to have last year. If you could do the next slide. This year, we have $513,000 out of the state trust fund, which brings the total out of the state trust fund to situate, for situate to $8.9 million. And I think that's a, a pretty incredible amount of money that the town's gotten through this program. So I wanted to point that out. Go to the next slide. This is kind of an eye chart, but it shows where we are financially and what we have in each of the funds. Open housing, historic, excuse me, open space, historic, community housing, and then the undesigned fund, which is really a catch-all fund that has anything that's not in the other three buckets. So we started out the year with, started out this coming year with $4.7 million and we expect to spend quite a bit of that to bring us down to $1.9 million, assuming everything goes through. And understand that it, one of these projects has not been voted on and it's still up in the air. And that's probably the biggest project that you'll see on the sheet here. But if you go down through the sheet, you'll see the $36,000 for each of those three buckets that needs to be allocated. We also have a $300,000 and then the 10% and the administrative expense that goes in the columns for the estimate that comes out of estimated receipts. One, if you would notice, there's a debt service paydown for the Fields project. We still owe money and will for quite a while. And the way they restructured the loan, we'll be paying about $300,000 and change every year for, I believe, another nine years. So that comes out of this money for this year. And we're, we're trying to pay off $334,000 out of that. And then the next five or perhaps six projects, I'll go into in detail, but that makes up the rest of the money we're looking to go to the town meeting with. Before I get to those five or six projects, if you go to the next slide, we do have some. Before I get to those five or six projects, if you go to the next slide, we do have some recisions and some reconciliations of monies that was allocated in the past and not spent. Most of these projects have been completed. The only exception that, of the projects that haven't completed are the two Lighthouse Lantern Room projects that were brought up. And they just, there were a lot of issues that came up with them with that, with that project. They still may do it, but it has been taking so long, we know from experience that any of the numbers they had four years ago or three years ago will probably have increased, particularly given the current situation in the country right now. So we, we asked them to rescind the money, and all that money will go back into the fund where it came from so that we can use that on future projects. So the total that we're rescinding this year is 216,652. And we did have quite a few applications this year. I think the number when we started was around 10 or 12. Some of those applications were withdrawn because we just weren't ready to go forth with them. We did deny two of the applications. And one of them was a fairly large request. And I'll mention that because I'm sure you wondered why, but we denied the Riddo's Walk parking lot request. And that was a request to fix the parking lot, basically. And there were several issues that came up with that that were problematic for the committee and problematic for using CPC money. The primary one was whether it was maintenance or rebuilding the entire parking lot. That was one issue. There was another issue of whether it should come from capital funds or CPC. And the consensus was it should be coming from capital funds. And the third aspect of it was, it was kind of minor, but it may impact us in the future, was that the only money you can spend for recreation has to be on outdoor facilities, and if there's, or outdoor activities and facilities. And if there's any indoor portion of that, then you have to proportion the monies that you're using based on the activity indoor versus outdoor. So we did vote and denied that request. That was about $700,000. And we thought that was a little bit high at the time, but may not be that high, given everything that's going on. But we did deny that. And before I get into the descriptions of the five and maybe six projects that we have, I'll ask if there are any questions on what I just went through. Okay, I'll just keep moving on then.
Dan, should I un, should I stop sharing screen at this point so we can all see each other?
Sure.
I just wanted to ask Dan, while you're doing the screen thing, Karen, if you don't mind. Dan, why do you think we, we received so much more money in 2021, the 513,000? That's a really big lift.
It is. I think mostly because the CPA, the Coalition in Boston, I think, did a very good job this year. They went back and increased the amount of revenue that was going into the fund through some of the fees that they, that the revenue comes from. So they had significantly increased that as well as, and I think that was the main reason why the, the increase was much more than we expected, particularly given the circumstances of this past year and what was happening. So the Coalition in Boston, I think, pressuring some of the political things going on at the State House, were able to get a lot more fees under this program, even though the number of communities that are participating has greatly increased since the beginning. There are, I think, 190, 92, more than that now, but there were about 192 at the beginning of the year. Communities which included some big cities like Boston. And they certainly get a lot of money. And that's probably why you see that on the chart, when you look at the graphing, the amounts have dropped considerably over the years. A lot of that really was, had to do with the number of communities that were coming in and had to be shared with. So I think that's why the amount was more this year because they did collect more, increased, they were able to increase the fees that they were collecting for the revenue that goes into the trust fund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If you want to stop sharing, there are a couple of pictures toward the end that I would like to put up. I'll tell you when we get there. The first project we had, we approved is the Affordable Housing, for the Affordable Housing Trust. And the Affordable Housing Trust set up a program for, excuse me, for rental assistance for people that are adversely impacted by the COVID situation. And what we did was, what they asked for, and we granted, or we voted for, I should say, was $100,000 to be put into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that they would draw out of as needed to help some people in Situate with rental assistance due to COVID problems. And they're doing this as part of a statewide effort that about 80 communities have participated in. And they're doing it with, in conjunction with the Mass Housing Partnership and an organization called Neighborhood Works. And we felt this was an appropriate use of, of the funds to do that and hopefully help people that were in need based on rental situations, specifically for rental in Situate. And again, this would be a fund that would be drawn out of as needed. And I don't know if there were any questions on that.
Does the board have any questions about that? Nope, Mr. Goodrich is quizzing at his screen.
I, well, yeah, sorry. And I'm just making sure that approved use and say that just for rental assistance versus actually building housing.
Yeah, no, this is just for rental, Andrew. I can answer that if you want, Dan. Being on the Affordable Housing Trust. So this is for when the federal programs, when folks don't qualify for federal, have gone through a couple of different federal program processes. This is, you know, to supplement that. So we can help out some folks here during the COVID time who can't meet their rent.
So I guess, so can we do it not in COVID time?
We hope so, but this one was specifically written for during COVID time. So we don't, we actually want to research and see if there's going to be any sort of additional steps that we'll have to take to keep it up and running post.
My understanding was this was specifically for rental as opposed to other types of housing expenses and things.
It is. You're correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, who, excuse me, Dan, one second, is, so will the Affordable Housing Trust be administering? Now, who will be administering the program?
So they're in the process of putting an RFP out, Karen. One of those such entities is Neighborhood Works, which is one of the few on the South Shore, but the, if, you know, pending approval, they're in the process of putting a bid out on the street. So somebody else would administer it for us, just as we have another entity administer any of the lotteries that take place when we're putting up affordable units. So same, same type of organizations.
Okay, and that, that, that vetting and selection will be done before April 12?
My understanding is no.
No.
No, but it will be basically a third-party administrator.
My understanding, this is a, a fund, the money goes into a fund that they then draw out of as needed.
Okay.
So it would not be completed before April 12.
All right, understood. Ms. Conley?
Yeah, Dan, or Mara, am I correct in thinking that I read that if you're already participating in other subsidized programs, that you are not eligible for this so that nobody is in effect double-dipping?
I don't know that specifically. That's a question we can go back to them and ask. I don't believe, Steve Irish was the sponsor in this, and I'm not sure he's on the call tonight.
Yeah, I don't, obviously, I don't think they can because I think they get bumped up against the federal program first, Karen. So if they're receiving that, then we're that backup after that. They can't do both.
Right.
And we have two, two folks on the Affordable Housing Committee that work in the Affordable Housing State, you know, industry, for lack of better words. So they're very, they're very well-versed, much better than I am on the process. So I'm pretty confident they would not be double-dipping.
Right.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Okay, so the next project, a fairly small, relatively small one. Cedar Point Hart Park has two benches that are about 30, so Cedar Point Hart Park is at the intersection of Jericho Road and Lighthouse Road. And they have two benches there that have, that are 30 years old and are in disrepair. So they're, they came to us to replace them. They're asking for $5,600. The Cedar Point Association is paying for $400 of that because we do ask every, almost every organization that comes in front of us to to get some skin in the game, if you will. So they're putting up $400 and ask CPC for 5,600 to provide these two benches. The two benches will be very similar to what's at the Lighthouse right now. And they will be made of epa wood, which, if any of you know, I call it a sawbreaker. It's a very strong wood that should last, actually better than composite material there. So that's, that's that project. I don't know if there are any questions?
Dana, is the curbing at all involved, or is it just, just the?
These are just the two permanently installed benches.
Okay, thanks, because there were some questions in the neighborhood about the curbing, but I think-
Yeah, this is, this is just for the two benches.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next, the next project, you actually talked about this earlier with the trail parking and, and parking lots that were put in at some of the recreational trails in town. Been going on for a couple of years. They basically ran into some additional costs in doing that and came back to us looking for $20,000 to complete the project. We recommended, I recommended that they, they bump it up to have contingencies in there as they run into things like turtle protection and other things that they need to do to put these facilities in to have universal access to the trails back there and the parking and, and the property that's been bought in the West End over the past few years. So this request is for $30,000. That's coming out of the Undesignated Fund to finish that project. Don't know if there are any questions on that?
Dan, who man, who's managing that project?
That's, I think Penny can talk to that. I don't know if she's still on.
Yeah, we have to unmute you.
You're on mute, Penny.
Sorry. Who's running the project?
Yeah, who, who's managing that that, you know, got the quotes and stuff that needed extra $20,000 or $30,000?
I did. Okay, we just ran out of funds. We, everything's completed except for Damon in, in a Crosby. We didn't get the handicap access to the field and some picnic tables. Okay, other than that, oh, and the signage has gone out, so that should be up. I'm hoping in the very near, near future, especially the road signs. But the other parking areas and roads are done, but we, we came up short on the Damon, and that was like an add-on when we put it out to bid.
Because, does it, does it go through the formal, the formal bid process, like do you-
Yes, it will.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tom McCathy from Engineering is helping him with the bid process.
Right.
Awesome, thanks.
Okay, the, the next project, I may ask you to put up one of the pictures in the document, if you could, following this. The Michael Golding family started this project and came to CPC requesting $100,000 for a, what we can call a green space that's behind the library. And the, the request is to create an outdoor space that's about 36 feet by 25 feet. The oval that I drew on this picture is not entirely accurate, but just shows it for placement purposes where this would be located. So it'd be located behind the library by the children and back of the children's room, if you will. And provide seating and wheelchair access, so it would be a quiet outdoor space for people to go and read or just enjoy nature. They're talking about some serious landscaping there that's being donated by Northern Oaks. They're also putting in seating, and they want to be able to use this for educational purposes as well as just enjoying the space that's back there. I think this would be a great addition to the library, and hopefully the seniors that are going into the Central Park facility would be able to use this as well as other people in the town. The total cost of the project is about 113,000. The Golding family is contributing about $10,000. Northern Oak Landscaping is not only contributing some of the plantings and landscaping there, but they're also committed to doing the maintenance of that for the first three years. And the maintenance for that, subsequent to that, will come out of donations that were made in memory of Michael Golding. So I think this would be a great addition to the library, a nice space to go out and enjoy the scenery there and be able to read or just look at the birds or what have you.
Yeah, and I, I just want to add, Dan, that the library trustees, this is, this has been in the works for a while, and that the library trustees have all unanimously supported this, this project. So I don't think they presented that to us, but I wanted you guys to know that.
Yes, it has, it has a lot of support from different organizations. And again, some significant, there's about $30,000 in donations when you add everything up on top of the 100,000 that they're asking from CPC. And again, most of these projects, when they come to CPC, we instruct them to build in contingencies. So even though they're asking for $100,000, the expectation is it may not be that much. Again, same as with the trail and parking additional funding. Because I know from personal experience, you don't want to have to go back to town meeting more than once. So we do ask them to build in some contingencies into each of the projects. So hopefully, they wouldn't run out of funds, given some unexpected costs.
And if I recall correctly, Dan, that they, the Golding, what are we calling this, the outdoor space?
Green space.
Green space. That there could be multiple phases of this, I believe, from conversation. This is the hardscape. I don't know if they've even discussed that with you guys.
They haven't discussed that with us yet. If you scroll down a little bit on the page, you'll, you'll kind of see what the little drawing, a little bit, just on the previous page. It's on the bottom of the page. I don't know if you can get there.
Okay. Oh, here we go. Okay.
The, next page.
Ah, yeah. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah, just scroll down a little. So that's, that's, if you can imagine the library being on the bottom of the screen, that's about what it will look like from, from an aerial view.
Any questions from the board on that, on the library? Memorial Garden? I don't see everybody, so just speak up if you want to. Okay, all right.
No, it looks good.
Okay, and there's a, another picture, two pages down. So this next project is the MBTA Birm Bridge Crossing and Path. And if you look at the diagram here, there's the existing path in blue that is the old railway, if you will. And then there is a path that goes- And then um, there is a path that goes behind the Riverway and James Landing and goes back to the Driftway path. And this is, this project is to join those two paths. So it'll be a circle that you could go from Dunkin' Donuts and down to James Landing around to the Driftway and back. The town owns the pro, uh, that lot that's right next to the Dunkin' Donuts and that's where the parking would be. Uh, there are two bridges that would need to be constructed to make this universally accessible and handicap accessible. And I think that's the majority of the cost there. Uh, they, they are asking for seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars from CPC to construct that pathway and make it universally accept uh, accessible. And it would be a very nice area for people to be able to walk through and enjoy the view of the marshlands that go south and, and east from where that pathway would be.
Uh, who's the applicant on this, Dan?
Me.
Penny?
Conservation?
Actually, it's um, the only thing I think um, it's for the design, permitting, construction documents, structural in the bidding process. Okay, that's what the seventy-seven thousand is for. And I um, got these from the, the quotes. Sean helped me with them and um, I got some quotes from Moore's Engineering just to get this project underway. My concern was that if I, number one, I don't know how much the bridges actually will, will cost. But once we get everything in order and then we have the bid, bidding out, because sometimes the permitting takes time, like I ran into with um, the roadways up the West End in the parking areas. And it took a few years and then we didn't have enough money. Yes, I just came back for more money. So this way we figured um, after ta, talking to some other people on CPC, that the best way to go about this is to get all these documents in order, the bidding process, and then I'll know exactly how much we need to construct the bridges. And um, I don't, yeah. So we're do, doing this part, project in two steps.
Yep. Um, Penny, have, have the Riverway and Lake James Landing residents been part of this vetting process? Do they know that this is in the offing?
Um, to be honest with you, no, I don't, I, I haven't spoken to them, but that is a public asset ask, access way, that path. And that was always the um, thing with the MBTA to have the pathway at the Marina and then come back out on.
Sure, I know, but this will just increase the um, usage for sure.
Yeah.
So um, that's something that, yes, it's a public access, but it's going to change the volume of access quite a bit. So, okay. Um, does the board have any questions about, about this proposal? Uh, Ms., I see two fingers. I just switched screens, Ms. um, Karen and then Ms. Connelly.
Karen, do I, do you want me to go?
Oh, sure, yeah, you go first, Ma.
So the only thing that concerns me and I, and I know you have, you're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, Penny, is that we have no idea what we're getting into. Like, is this a million dollar project? Is it a five hundred thousand dollar project? Is it an eight hundred thousand dollar project?
No.
And we're asking to spend seventy-seven thousand just for a design and permitting, but then we don't know what's going to cost us to construct, correct?
We have a ballpark figure, what we believe the bridges will cost after talking with some engineers. But we don't want to have what happened with the park.
No, no, I understand that. So can you give me what that ballpark figure is, just to have an understanding?
At anywhere from fifty to seventy-five thousand per bridge. So that could be a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand is what with the engineers are throwing out. But if the economy goes crazy, and that's what ha, happened with um, up the West End, was the five fifty was gonna, gonna be plenty of money for those roads. And then all of a sudden, the econ, economy turned and it was much more money. Okay?
So this is just for two bridges?
Two bridges, but you have to do all.
The red, the red is already pretty much there except for those bridges, so that path.
No, the red, it is a path there now, but it is not handicapped accessible, that path.
So is it going to be raised and be more like a wooden?
Already raised, the Birm, Birm is raised. It, it would just be um, some work have to be done on the paths, make, make it wider and then put hard tack down. So it would be handicapped accessible, alright? And at this moment in time, this fall, somebody had put some telephone poles across the two crossings. So that's not the way, way to get across when the tide's high.
No.
To balance on the telephone poles.
Somebody's going to get down there with a video when that happens.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thanks Penny.
You're welcome.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes, to be clear, the, the skinny blue that is in front of Riverway, James Landing out to, it looks back onto the Driftway, that is public
Yes, it is.
Access. So, you know, it may be that there may be more people walking along those path, but if they're public, I think it would be nice for people to be able to use them. And I, I think that by connecting this, it will get more use, but I think that's the whole point. And they'll be walkers. They won't be on, they won't be on, in cars.
No, no. And they won't be there all at once.
Right. But I assume we would also have to have some sort of public hearings.
Oh, yeah, no, well, that, that's what all um, all the permitting, all the public hearings and all that would be done prior to me come, coming back for what the actual cost would be.
So it's at all as part of this seventy-eight thousand dollars?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Good question. Uh, Mr. Goodrich?
Yes, I guess I'm still a little confused. I mean, first, I had, I can't believe I didn't know there was any path right there next to the Dunkin' Donuts, maybe because there's no signage.
Well, this, the old railroad bed.
Right, okay. I, first, the first I've ever seen it. I'm Googling it now for the first time. No idea. I'm looking for new places to walk.
I learned, I only learned this six months ago from Mr. Bedrow.
No idea.
Really? It's very cool. Go ahead. Um.
Walk your dog there, Andrew.
That's, I'll be there tomorrow.
Yeah.
And so I, so where the the red is, I mean, it looks like it's, again, I'm doing this from Google Maps. Is it like, it's marshland because it's going towards the First Herring River? I mean, what's, and I know those are condos and stuff, but I would assume if you, if you live by the Riverway or James Landing, you're just going to walk up to the, you know, in the streets. So like, what's out there? I have no idea. I mean, I'll find out tomorrow, but what's, what's there?
Nature. It, it's beautiful. It's just gorgeous. You have a complete view of the marsh. It, it, it's um, you just have to go out there and you'll really see why I'm so excited about it. It, it's a very, very scenic path.
It's included a sign.
Bathway, if I will, if you will.
Alright. Okay.
Here, if, if I could add, it's, it's a, it's a, a very different sort of an experience, I think, for people who, like me, I don't like to go walking in the woods all by myself. This is all very open. So you would feel safe walking there.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Mr. Binani. I'm sorry, Mr. Goodrich, were you finished?
Yeah, no, I, I'm just shocked I didn't know about that.
You need to get out. Mr. Binani?
Yeah, um, I have a couple of questions. I, I guess, um, and Penny, love you, um, but, but we've,
But?
I'm concerned about the total cost of the project and that not all being before us, before we vote on a component of it. So this, this project is really going to cost probably two hundred and twenty to two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Um, which is a lot of money. I know CPC money is, you know, and, and everything costs way more than I think it, it should anyways. We all, then we all think it should, but it, it's just, it's, it's real money. And I guess my other thought is, you know, where does this fall on the priority of projects that we're trying to do? And is this a, is this a conservation project? Is this a, a penny project or what, what is this project?
It's conservation.
Yeah, so I would love to see a list of, here are the ten things, twenty things that conservation wants to do in the town, so that we can get our arms around what we really want to do and make sure that they're the priorities that the board wants to do too. And, you know, do we want to spend a quarter of a million dollars on this bridge?
The conservation? Yes, we, we, we already, I was gi, given this last fall. Okay, as a project, because we, we had discussed all these different projects and.
I'd love to see the projects and say, okay.
One that we have been wanting to do for a long, long time. But the time, the West End was the most important.
Right, I guess as, as, as the board member, I'd like to see the projects that you're trying to complete, so that we can actually put it in in kind of concept and, and kind of in perspective of what else is going on in town, so the, so that we can actually speak intelligently about whether twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars should be spent here or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars should be spent there, because we think that it's more important to put, you know, to put something over by the beaches or to, do something by a school or just kind of get a full breadth concept of what conservation is thinking. Um, because it's hard for, it's hard for, for me to say that this is the project that, that I think is, is warranting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars of my CPC money.
I think Tony raises a good point. You know, we just purchased that beautiful walkway too around the harbor, so we don't really have an idea as to what's in store for that piece of land, right, as far as a walkway either. So I think like, Tony, I think you raise a really good point, is what are those other projects that you are looking at? I know you're also looking at cleaning up Conservation Park a little bit, right?
Conservation Park has their, their own funds for down there, okay? That park, this is something that we don't have funds for.
I never knew Conservation Park had funds. Okay, so I guess just, just, just to Tony's point, I think again, we just kind of need a an ideal list of, of of all the considerations. I, I agree with him.
Yeah, I think that, I think, thank you for articulating that. So that, that's always the trouble. And I know that CPC goes through this all the time, is, you know, you're presented with an application, but it's not in context. And uh, and we do have, I mean, we, we rely on the uh, Conservation Commission to advise us on these things. And obviously, this isn't a recommendation. Um, but yeah, context is really important. What's coming down the road? Do we want to?
And not only coming down the road, but what am I, why am I spending it on this project as opposed to another project? Um, you know, Penny, you just said, we've got a whole list of projects. Well, I'd like, I'd like to see what those are, so that I can, so I can make my best opinion on where to spend the taxpayers' money.
Well, this was our, one of the top priorities. Driftway Park in this, okay, with the two top. Driftway Park, I was not given that project to work on. Somebody else was given it and um, there are funds that we have a Driftway Park funds, alright, already set aside. So this was the next one on the list.
What I'm saying is I want to see the list. Just because it's your next one, doesn't mean it's my next one.
Oh, I understand what I'm saying. It's conservations, okay? And, but other than that, no, I can't tell you what he and after those. Though, those are the ones, um, the top priorities for us were to get Driftway Park. See if we could get some more parking down there and um, this, to get these bridges in. This is something that has been sitting. This, it's the MBTA Birm, this was a mitigation project because they did something they should, shouldn't have done. So they had to recreate the wetlands. That's why the Birm went, went in to begin with. And um, if you go back over the pa, paperwork, at one point in time, when the MBTA was still here, they were supposed to put the bridges in. Well, it never happened and then there were no funds and I I was not involved at that time, so I cannot tell you why the bridges weren't put in, but there is doc, doc, well, they said that they didn't want to be responsible for it, even though they were asked by the town to put the bridges in so people could cross over there.
Why don't, Jim, could you please ask um, Frank to send us sort of um, uh, their prioritization? It's obviously, this is their top priority, but um, give us the, the background of things that they've considered. Um, and um, then we can have that as, I think, I think Tony, you're right. We should be, at some point, we need to have have uh, conservation, or conservation come in and just sort of review what their recommendations are. Because we're getting a, we're getting the tip of the iceberg on this.
Yeah, I also just think it's important that the taxpayers know the full cost of the project. You know, that, that this is stage one and stage two is going to be this and, you know, now that the path is going to be done and that's going to be another fifty thousand dollars or whatever it's going to be, you know, that we just kind of know A to Z, so that we make a you know, just make a full, a decision on the full project.
Um, but unfortunately, that's circular, just like when we do water projects. Like, you don't know until you do the design.
Yeah.
Oh, you can get es, I mean, you can get estimates.
Yeah, and Penny's given us estimates of what they thought the bridges would cost.
Yes, that's what, um, you know, I talked to two engineers and they both said at the moment, they think between fifty and seventy-five per bridge, which I was shocked at, you know? But that's the price. I mean, I was shocked at just to get all the documentation together to do it, the permitting and the design and everything, that it came up to seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Right, and then, so we should get an estimate on the path repair too, to make that handicap accessible.
Part of it. That's part, part of this application will be what that's going to cost.
Yeah, so we should go to town meeting and say, that's going to cost approximately whatever your engineer said on the other one. They could say it's going to cost approximately twenty to, you know, thirty grand or whatever it costs. Just again, so whoever's voting on it at a town meeting has the full the full scope of what we're trying to do. Because when we first presented this, I thought it was seventy-seven thousand dollars for the full thing.
I wish it was.
No, me too. And I live over there and I, I walk out there all the time, so I'm, I'm not opposed to the project specifically, but I think that's the way that we should be.
Okay, because we, we thought we're, we ran, ran into problems before with because permitting can take a year or two years sometimes. Other times it goes through quickly, you know, we have to do a ninety-one and all that. So um, after speaking with some members on CPC and conservation, we thought the best way to go was this way, to do the design, the permitting, the construction documents and put it out to bid and then come back for the funding of the actual bridges, instead of just throwing out a figure, because I could have done this and thrown out the figure, um, another one fifty for it for the construction, but wonder if I'm way off. I don't know.
I, I think you're doing the project correctly.
That was the best.
The stages of the project are correct. I just think we've got to inform the public at town meeting of what, what they're getting into. It could be a seventy-seven thousand dollar, uh, you know, get the package together and then think it cost a million three.
Well, that, you know.
I'm just saying, it could, you know, there, there could be projects like that where people would just want to know.
No, that's fine. No, that's fine. I, I can do that. I can sit down again with the engineers and have them put it in, you know, out there, but it's just to get guesstimate once again.
But I think everybody understands that, Penny, sorry, Madam Chair.
Okay, that's fine.
I think, you know, you just have to think about all the other permitting projects that we've done over the years and usually there's, you know, there's a high end estimate to say the overall cost of this project's going to be five hundred thousand dollars. We're just asking you right now for seventy-seven. So when you come back to town meeting two years later and say, oh, I need another three hundred thousand dollars. I told you three years ago that it was going to be almost five hundred, so you're kind of on record saying what the original estimate could be. Everybody knows that prices go up and escalate. Everyone knows that. But everybody like Karen said earlier, just needs a little bit of context to understand what's the end game here.
That's fine. I mean, that, that's easy enough to throw.
It'll hope it passes as well, Penny, honestly, the more information you share.
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Conley and then Mr. Finley?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say, I think I recall that this project was, um, approved at a town meeting. Like, just bear with me a minute, Karen, quite a few years ago, and it never got off the ground. And, and I remember because I had a heated, number of heated discussions with Frank Snow over trying to rescind the money because the project had never taken off. And it took me, I think, three years to get him to agree to rescind the money with the understanding that when they were ready, they would come back. So, you know, this has been, and if you look at, if you look at the fact that it, it closes a gap and that people don't even understand that they can walk in front of James Landing. They don't understand that that's not just Totman down there with their trucks, that there's a beautiful landscape down there, so, um, you know, I understand everyone's issues related to wanting to know what could the overall project cost in total. But we've been here before, as we all know, with having a design permit, et cetera. And so I don't think that the way it's being done is unreasonable, um, so, just my two cents.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. Finley?
Yeah, I think it's entirely reasonable to, to, uh, we, we can put in what the estimated costs are and understand their estimated cost of, of construction for the project and that this is the first phase of a two-phase project. I think we can do that. I think the question will come up at town meeting anyway. So, um, you know, i- i- it's not something that, that would be a surprise if we went to town meeting and somebody uh, quite a few people would ask that question, I think. So it, it's totally reasonable. I think we can, we can put this together, get an estimate on the, on a construction cost and add that to the description of what we're looking to do right now.
Great. Uh, Mr. Check, you have your hand up, I think.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to add, uh, thank you, on the, um, how funds are used throughout town, particularly with CPC, and I think when you look at the breadth of CPC's work, uh, especially when it comes to land acquisition and for recreational projects, the majority of that work has been in the West End, around the harbor or at some of the schools, or like we did the playground at North Situate or Wampituck, Wampituck School. Uh, recently, CPC has received applications from groups within Green Bush for recreational projects. One was for a playground, but they don't have a place for a playground. And there were two applications for sidewalk projects which CPC can't use funds for, so we had to, th- those were all withdrawn. Uh, so this is an example where we can provide funding for an outdoor recreational uh, pursuit within the Green Bush neighborhood that we haven't really done before. So I, I would hope that everyone would consider that as well.
Thank you, Scott. That's a, that's a very good point. Mr. Goodrich?
Would it be possible, I mean, just to get a better, to get that forensics done on, on what did happen, why the MBTA didn't fund this? Because I know that's going to come up and, I listen, I know they're broke right now and we're not going to get money from them, but still knowing that history or just, I think we need to know that because if there was something that happened, um, I think it'll, it'll be important, so if, I don't know who can do that, but I'd like to know.
Okay, we'll put that, we'll put that in a, in a follow-up bucket for sure. Um, there are a couple of those things. Unfortunately, it's ancient history and we're going to have to recreate it. Are there any other questions or comments about this application? By the board, no?
Okay, we'll keep moving on. We have one more project that has not been voted on by CPC and basically we're waiting for guidance from the Select Board. And that's the purchase of, uh, the property, uh, forty, uh, along Chief Justice Cushing Highway, uh, four forty-three to four sixty-one. And that's the, the seven lots that, uh, the town did have appraised at, uh, one point three five million dollars. So we put a placeholder into this document in case this does come up, because we won't have a lot of time if the town does decide to go this route. Um, this is for the purchase of the, uh, properties that you can see on the map. I think there are nine uh, lots in there. It's about sixteen acres and it's all, uh, downhill toward the, uh, the reservoir there. And what, uh, CPC would consider is purchasing the land for conservation purposes. So that is still to be decided by the Select Board. Uh, CPC has not voted on it. We have had a discussion. We do have the money if this is decided to, to to go forth with CPC funding this. And, uh, what we did was put another twenty thousand dollars into the request to cover any, uh, conservation restrictions or legal fees associated with the purchase of a property.
Hey, well, we will be revisiting that discussion when we do the warrants in general, so, um, any questions about that?
Uh, I have a question. Do you know what timeframe you, you're expecting a decision because what, um, CPC is trying to do is schedule a special meeting to vote on this if it does go down that route. Um, so we'd like to know of what we should expect as far as the timing of this would be.
We are scheduled next to talk about the warrant articles and we have a placeholder for, um, either in CPC or as a municipal purchase. So we will be discussing that tonight and I believe we have to vote on it tonight.
Okay.
Yep, Jim's nodding.
Thank you.
Great.
Any questions on, on anything? Uh, that's, that's all I have for tonight. Um, if there are no questions, I thank you all for, uh, listening to us.
One question, Dan, for that property, um, on, uh, Chief Justice Cushing, you said that, that it was, uh, for conservation purposes?
We, we would put conservation restrictions on it, yes.
Okay, would you purchase it in other, any other manner? Without conservation.
We would consider, it could be considered that way, but it depends on what the, uh, amounts would be and where the money would be coming from.
Okay.
So if, if I'm correct, the app, the actual applicant for CPC is?
The Select Board.
We did put the application, I know, we're sort of circling around, okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Holt?
This from Mr. Finley. Um, could you verify the amount for the trail parking and access additional funding? Because it's gone from thirty to fifty back to thirty again.
It should be thirty.
Yes, the, uh, it was thirty and it always was thirty. Um, that was a mistake that was, uh, spoken at the advisory meeting, I think. Yes, but it was thirty thousand, that was the amount. Original amount was twenty. We asked them to increase it to thirty and, uh, the discussion at the advisory committee, and I did send them a message correcting that, uh, was incorrect. So thirty thousand is the correct amount.
Great. Are there any other, um, wrong screen, any other questions or comments about the CPC warrant proposals? I seeing none. I don't, if anyone, uh, any participant would like to raise hand to discuss any of these, now's your chance. And, uh, you know, either take your video off or raise hand and I'm not seeing either. Um, okay, so we are going, thank you so much, Dan. I mean, I, I just want to pause for one second. I mean, CPC is, has an awesome responsibility on the part of the town, as you outlined with the, the funds that are under your discretion to, but, you know, to recommend. Um, it takes a great deal of work and, and the board really appreciate, I know, Ms. Conley has had the experience, I've not, but, um, we really appreciate the work and the diligence that your town, your committee does, um, put into these reviews, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Um, we will, all right, so we are going to, um, take all of your information and consider it and now we need, I, I'm not actually, it, the next bullet on our agenda is all projects and articles and then the warrants, so I'm not exactly sure how that organized. Jim, can you illuminate me at the rate? Are we just going to go through the articles on voting or how would you best recommend us to proceed?
Yeah, I mean, I would just go right through them. Um, we got the capital last, could take a pause and come back to that, but I would just go right through them. Some we haven't discussed, we'll discuss them when we get to them. But start with the special, Nancy, we'll start with the special in the annual.
Uh, let me get, I got, sorry, I got.
Why would you special? I don't know if the selectmen have special. I, we only were able to nail it down this afternoon, so if you need me to, I can share my screen, Madam Chair.
Um, that would be very helpful. Thank you. Yeah, so why don't we go chronological? Um, where is capital? It's like three.
Article three in the annual.
Article three, okay, so why don't we table three and, um, go through, uh, the only other question is should we, when we go to the annual, should we do all the consents to discuss at first together?
I would, I would just go right through them.
Okay.
It's not consent. If you want to leave it on consent, we leave it on consent. That we actually decide later, so we don't even have to decide that now.
Okay.
I would just, just to make sure we don't miss one, I just go.
All right, I'm scrolling through my agenda, but, um, Nancy, uh, Ms. Holt, if you would like to um, tee us off with the, um.
Bear with me, I can see it, but I can't see it as a share, so just give me one sec. It's the, uh, first full day with the new computer, so mix that with Zoom and, and bad things happen.
All right, we are not sharing.
I was sharing the wrong document in hopes that the right document might pop up. There we go. There we go.
Okay.
So let me just scroll down without making anybody sick. Um, do you want me just to run through these, Madam Chair?
Yeah, so what do you think, Jim? Should we just, um, why don't you run through them if anyone want, I, maybe we'll do it like to have Mike moderator. If somebody wants to discuss a particular thing, say hold, otherwise, I mean, do we need to vote on each of these individually? What's the protocol?
I think you could vote them all together if you so desire.
That's, that's what I'm thinking. I think more for efficiency sake, um, if somebody, um, thinks that something needs to be pulled out, we'll do that.
Yeah, I would just vote the, the special separate from the annual, that's all.
Okay, all right.
We go through the special articles and vote the special at town meeting, then go through the annual.
Okay, article one unpaid bills?
Um, we have four unpaid bills. They were in the selected background information. That wasn't your packet, so there were no big surprises there. Um, I won't go into them. The fiscal twenty-one budget reconciliation, this is what we were trying to nail down this, um, this afternoon and this morning. Um, there's an eight thousand dollar transfer from Planning Board to Board of Health and that's to cover the Social Services Director that was hired earlier than what was budgeted. You would ask us because of the COVID pandemic to try to get that position filled, which we did. Um, Karen Joseph did, um, agree that we could take those funds from her salaries because they do have the vacancy in Director of Community Planning and Velvet, which has been filled as of, you, you heard tonight, but that leaves plenty of money to cover, um, that position. The other, uh, the next item is unfortunately, one of our Sanders, which is not on the five-year capital plan, a truck now has a cracked frame. It wasn't an accident, it's just the truck met a bad end. Um, and we are down a sander and we're down a large piece of equipment. Um, as I said, it's not even on the capital plan because it wasn't planned on being replaced the next five years. As you may recall, highway and public grounds, there was a hiring freeze because of COVID, so they have significant, uh, salary funds um, that are still remaining in fiscal twenty-one and we still have a hundred and forty-six thousand in snow and ice. So what we were thinking is potentially is to make their equipment whole by using their unused salaries and then it would need twenty-five thousand in free cash. They probably will have even more than that in the new salaries, but we didn't want to cut them off because it's coming up into the seasonal period and this year they will be hiring seasonals. Last year they did not hire any seasonals because of COVID. So I'll let you think about that one. Um, the transfer station hauling costs has been a problem for several years. It continues to be a problem. Um, Kevin, Sean and I think a hundred and ten thousand will comfortably get that budget through. It's budgeted, it's seven seventy-five. So that would bring it to eight eighty-five, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for hauling costs. Um, so far this year, there's a seven hundred ton increase in trash over the prior year, so people are at home, people are cleaning out, people are doing things. That's not all of it. We also have increased costs. Um, so later on, when we have our due meetings and discuss rates, we'll, we'll look at this when we have a better picture of revenue. Their revenue is definitely doing better than the prior year, so that's a good thing. Um, but we just don't have the spending authority to make it through the balance of the year, um, for the hauling costs. And that would be coming from their retained earnings. Uh, water capital outweigh, um, if you may be aware, one of our vehicles was in an accident, um, this, this week. It's likely to be a total loss. We believe it's going to be totaled. We don't know for sure from the, um, insurance company. We will not get replacement value. We will only get current value. Um, so there's going to be a delta in order to replace that utility truck for the Water Enterprise. This would, um, put funds from retained earnings to be combined with the insurance proceeds, which doesn't require a town meeting vote so that they could replace the truck, um, as soon as possible.
And what happened? I'm sorry, I'm not aware of what happened.
The, the, uh, operator was out of the vehicle, was parked on the side of Route three A and someone hit his vehicle.
Oh, gosh.
So, he wasn't even in the truck. There was absolutely no injuries, uh, but the truck was banged up, so. Uh, if there's no injuries, I don't tell the board just because the truck got banged up, but I believe the driver of the other vehicle was cited by the police.
Okay, thanks.
And if it turns out that they don't total the vehicle, then we could, um, just not act on, is, remove it. It's part of the motion when we get closer to town meeting. And then Widow's Walk has a, a happy, a happy problem. Um, they need additional funds in the technical services line because they're having such good sales and they now have an online POS system. More people are paying with credit cards and we have to pay fees when people pay for credit cards. So they need more funds to pay their credit card fees, but they're more than making up for it in sales. Their, um, year-to-date revenue was already ninety point four percent collected.
Can you scroll down, Nancy?
Yep.
Are you scrolling?
No, I'm not scrolling. Is that better?
Okay, there you go. Yep, thank you.
All right. So it, they do need more, um, expense money, but it's for a good reason because their sales are so great and they have finally brought their POS system online. So I don't know if there's any questions about that or you want to think about that article. I'll move on to three as you ruminate.
Hold on a second, Nancy.
Yeah.
On the twenty-five grand of free cash, can we get that from somewhere else?
We potentially could get it from, um, taking more from their salaries because they, they could afford to lose, to give up more. I just didn't want to be that tight with it, but I can.
Yeah, and maybe snow and ice. I don't know how much.
I, I can, what I can do is I can, um, I'll go back. There's definitely room in the salary lines. There, if snow and ice stays where it's at, even if we fill the salt shed, we're still going to have forty to fifty thousand dollars left over. So we can certainly, um, go there. I just didn't want to, I, it's, it's kind of like poking mother nature.
Kind of recommendations right now, Tony, close to the town meeting. Uh, every time Nancy says we can take some money out of snow and ice, I expect snow to fall out of the sky as we're speaking. So we're just being a little cautious with that, but as we get closer to town meeting, we can take more out of that account and lean less on the, uh, the free cash.
Yeah, I'd rather not use free cash. On the retained earnings, what are the balance in these accounts? What's the transfer station even have?
Transfer station doesn't have much. They have, bear with me, uh, three hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. And water has three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars left, which doesn't sound like much. But that's because they funded the reservoir dam at the, uh, November town meeting and that was three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, there, the increased rates is also helping the Water Enterprise fund revenue, so, um, they will finish comfortably.
And, and Widow's Walk?
I'm sorry, what, you want all three? Widow's Walk has, oh, sorry, further along in the spreadsheet. One hundred and, that can't be right, one thing. Eighty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. But if you reduce it by the fifteen thousand we just talked about, it'll be just over almost sixty-six thousand.
And there's not an expense you can take the Widow's Walk from?
No, because they need more money to spend, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's going to flush to retain earnings anyways.
Oh, they're going to have a nice retained earnings this year.
Okay.
Okay, so article three is an article that hopefully we can IP when we get to town meeting. Uh, we currently have an authorization from the Department of Revenue to deficit spend for COVID-nineteen related expenses of a hundred and three thousand dollars. As far as I'm aware, we are not even in a deficit spending situation, but the problem I have is that Plymouth County has, right now, we're looking at a five-month lag in turning around our claims, so I do not know what we've claimed, if it will be, um, reimbursed. So, right now, people have to take it out of their budgets, which is causing budget issues. If COVID-related expenses get denied by Plymouth County, I'm going to need this deficit spending authority in order to make the budgets whole. So, this article has to be here for now because we have that authority. My goal and sense will be that we will never have to act on this article, and we will not need to use it. Um, but I need to have something in place to account for the fact that I have that deficit, that the town has that deficit spending authority right now.
But the article doesn't say where the source of those funds are? Does it need to?
No, it would be in the motion, but the source would be free cash.
Okay.
And we have four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in free cash remaining currently.
And, and we'd ask for that deficit spending authorization early because it takes the, uh, DOR a while to turn it around.
Yep.
So, rather than wait behind everybody else in the queue, we went out and got it. And if Plymouth County gets going, we'll be fine, but they've just been very, very slow. It seems to be even slowing down more now, it's now that they're getting near the end, um, and their reimbursements.
There should have been a meeting last week, and there wasn't, and there's not a meeting scheduled this week, and they haven't voted on anything situat related since February, uh, fifth or eighth. And we have sixteen claims for one point two million outstanding, and they date all the way back to October. So, i- it's irritating to say the least, and all I can get them to say is you're going to get two point eight million. That should be enough for you to, to work it out. And it's not, and I don't know what they're going to deny or what they're going to grant.
Do we know what their balance is, Nancy? Do they have a balance?
Yeah, that's in your municipal disbursement form. They still have the ninety million. They've only dispersed about, man, twenty-five to thirty-five million of it. But every time they say anything publicly, they say they have two hundred claims and they processed a hundred. So, they kind of been stuck at that fifty percent processing, and I don't think it's going to get any better because their first line of review is, there is an audit firm, and this, we're getting into the high tax season. So, I don't think they're going to have enough help to, to do anything more than what they were currently doing. So, my sense is they're about at least first round review halfway through our claims. Um, but it's a four-step process.
With the, uh, board support, um, sending a letter, um, imploring them to, uh, use the resources they can to get these processing, um, you know, get the processing done. Would you guys?
It doesn't, if it doesn't hurt us.
Nancy, would you recommend that as something that would be useful, or just spitting in the wind?
I think they're, they're glacial in their movement. I would love a letter because m- my jumping up and downs is not go, is not doing anything. Um, but I don't know if that would do anything either, and it's Demora's point. I, I don't want to pick a fight with them. I just want them to process the claims faster and to give, provide more information.
Alright, well, maybe what the lawyers should do is point out that they've commended you effusely for the, the, uh, the documentation that you provide, and if they could expedite your review, that one might be useful.
Or just provide us with an update as to when they're going to do that. I, I have spoken to, um, you know, I will give, Treasure O'Brien is extremely polite and extremely helpful, um, and he will take my calls, which some people won't. Um, but all he'll tell me is that, you know, they'll get to it, and I've been telling him for two months now that this has to go to hearings, this has to go to town meeting, this has to be in a published warrant. I need a number. And we're not any closer. So, we're going to go to town meeting with a number that I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Alright, well, I think then, you know, after this meeting, we can talk about, uh, seeing what kind of pressure we can imply.
Okay. Um, and the fourth article, the, and the last article is just the one that, um, Karen, uh, Finley spoke to uh, about the, uh, balance for fiscal twenty-one for the set of sides for CPC.
Okay, great. Sorry, I'm writing notes. Um, okay, so we have four articles in the, um, the special. Uh, does, uh, the board have any further questions or comments on those particular articles? No? Um, what was I even asked? Um, Nancy, I mean, not related to this though, but given the situation with the transfer station, are we going to be revisiting our, a conversation, having a revisiting conversation on fees?
We definitely have to have a revisiting conversation. Uh, sewer was already one we had to speak about. Um, so we'll add transfer station, and we can just have a preliminary one on water because we did issue some additional debt, but we, those rates were a little, set a little bit higher, but transfer stations, sewer definitely have to be revisited, um, at, in your June meetings for a potential, um, rate change for July first. Potential. We, we will look at what the revenue is doing and take everything under advisement at that time.
Right, if we're taking a third of our retained earnings to, to balance the books, then we need to have that conversation, I would think.
And if hauling costs, we, or if we're getting no relief from those costs.
Right. Okay. Uh, any other questions on articles one through four on the special town meeting? Saying none, is there anyone that would like to make a motion? Do we have a motion?
Yes, there's a motion in your packet.
Okay. Uh.
Move that the select board uh, vote the warrant articles for the April twelve to twenty-twenty-one special. Should we do special separately?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, special, uh, town meeting contingent upon further changes by town council and or town administrator.
Looked by Mr. Vignani as there's second. Second by Mr. Goodrich. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes, and.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Cooking long, Nancy. As always, thank you. Uh, that brings us to, um, our annual town meeting, of which there are thirty um, articles. I'm going to, I'm actually going to share a screen on this so that I can help follow along. And I know how, so that's cool. Um, okay, so number one is the elected official salary. That's a pretty boiler point, uh, plate, um, article. Uh, should we, um, why don't we go through the ones where no one has any comments and, and put them into one motion? Is that acceptable? Uh, does anyone have, I, I can't see everyone, so just holler if you want to add, um, something. Does anyone have any objection to, or any comments on article one? Saying none. Okay, article two is town reports. Um, which is, yeah, this is better, town reports. Um, does anyone have any comments or concerns about that? Okay, article.
I, I don't think that should be consent. I think that we should give a town report.
Right, but that, isn't that consenting for each body to give their report?
Consent means we're not going to do it. We're going to vote initially and see if, if the town wants to just pass them all in one motion.
And the board always gives a report before we even get to the warrant. This is, I mean, this is on every town warrant out of, I've ever seen. If you want to let every board and committee get up and make a report, it would be there for weeks.
Well, I guess maybe just.
I don't think so.
Just confirm with the moderator that he's going to let the advisory committee and the, and the chair of the board, you know, kind of do the state of the union.
Yeah, I mean, we generally, generally do that before you get into the warrant. So.
Yeah. Uh, that's a good point, Tony, so we'll definitely need to discuss that with the, the moderator ahead of time.
Well, I guess to Tony's point, if it's done before we even get to the warrant, why is this in the warrant?
Yeah.
I think it's for all the other committees.
Everybody else.
Is it required to be on there?
As I said, every town meeting warrant I've ever seen has it on there, not just here.
Okay. So, uh, I mean, I, I guess it's pedantic, but if, if we put it in a consent and everyone, and everyone goes, yeah, yeah, we want to hear from people, and then nobody reports.
Hold out.
What?
They can hold it and pull it out of the consent agenda.
Um, okay, does anyone have any, uh, questions about whether or not we want to support this article? Do you want to keep it in this group? Okay, keep it in the group.
No, I would say, I don't want to keep it in the consent group.
No, nothing.
But I do, I do support the article.
Our vote tonight, whether we support.
I, I support article two.
And consent, consent agenda will come up later. This is just, these are just supporting the warrant articles as they are. And then you'll get a consent agenda before town meeting to go through and decide what you wanted to consent, what you don't.
Okay.
Alright, but in, on our copy, it, this is indicated as consent to Tony's point.
It's just a suggestion.
Got it.
So, we'll vote that later.
We'll vote that later. Um, article three is the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, we want to hold that for now, come back to that.
Yep, so we'll hold three. Um, sorry, I say scroll through, there's a lot of paper here. Article five, this, that was four, other is the Water Enterprise Fund.
Are we holding four?
What about four, the operation?
I know, where's, what the hell?
Right there.
You just went through it, saw that.
There you go. Oh, oh, that little thing, the article for, the operating budget.
So, were there any adjustments made, um, from all budgets that we reviewed in the past couple of weeks? Any final adjustments here, Jim? Nancy?
Yes, there were. Um, there, the board has to consider two things. One, the changes to the debt service budgets. Um, that financial forecast, um, voted to change their forecast this evening at five forty-five and lowered the debt service, um, allocation based on the refunding bonds that were issued, um, and the new bond that was issued, so that, um, what's reflected on the, what you have on screen, it's in there and changed. Uh, and then the town administrator add backs. Uh, when the, the forecast was re-voted in January, and there were additional funds, they gave, um, in your packet, you were given a list of town administrator add backs, including the two hundred thousand for roads and seawalls. That was one of them. The, I can bring up that copy of that items. You didn't take any action at the time. So, in this, it was to be, at this time, you were to decide if you didn't want to do any of those or want to change those funding sources around.
Okay, I, I would suggest that we take, um, article four and hold that for now and not do it in our group because I think there's some conversation that we'll want to have quickly. Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay, so then article five is the, uh, Waterway Enterprise Fund. Anybody want to further discuss that? Um, article six is the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. Any comments? Okay, article seven is Wastewater Enterprise Fund. Any further comments? Unless you holler, I'm just going to keep scrolling. Eight is the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund. Okay. Nine is the Water Enterprise Fund. This is double funds. Uh, ten is Stabilization Fund Access Levy. No comments? Okay, number eleven is Revolving Fund Limits.
Did any change?
Nancy?
Um, hold on.
Last updated on March fifth.
Um, can you hold it for a minute and I'll just check? A, a couple of them did change.
Okay.
Actually, I might, I couldn't have, I might have put it in the other document. I had glasses on my face, I could still listen.
I feel a pain.
Yes, um, senior center revolving, I increased it from thirty-five thousand in fiscal twenty-one to seventy thousand because we had a new senior center opening, and I figured there'd be a lot more programs, so if I doubled, um, the, the limit. And then on the minded beach, uh, the beach stickers, uh, we left it where it was because minded beach parking lot, so it seems high, but that's because minded beach parking lot is factored into that just as a spending authorization. And solar array was increased by thirty-five thousand to four eighty-five, and that was based on the fiscal twenty expenditures. And perk witness fees was increased, um, from twenty to twenty-five, and that was based on the fiscal twenty activity.
Thanks.
Was there any, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Goodrich?
I mean, the wind turbine revolving fund, uh, fund for any action that we may have taken, would, would there be any impact there, or, or?
This is just an expend. I'm so, I'm sorry, Mr. Goodrich.
Oh, no, 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 the, the limit wouldn't change. I'm sorry, you can explain it.
No, you're right. The, it, this is just an expenditure limit. If, if we, um, create less, we will pay less if we have to pay out rather than from, um, the revenue we take in, but from the, the actual fund balance, it's still going to be an expenditure.
Go for the other, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about article eleven revolving funds? Are we comfortable putting that in a group vote? Okay. Um, article twelve is CPC. I presume that we'll hold that out to have a, a separate discussion. Oh, wait. Is this the individuals? No, this is, yeah, it is. Okay. Can we hold that out and talk about that separately? Um, article thirteen is reconciliations, um, for CPC. Any questions or comments on that? We'll keep that group vote then. Okay. I think that was well covered. Um, article fourteen is debt authorization for South Shore Boat Tech. It was recently updated, reviewed by town council. Um, what, uh, what's changed on this, if anything?
I'm not aware, um, Superintendent Hickey sent something out today about how they were going to phase it, but I don't believe it, um, changes the overall dollar value. Just that they were going to do it over several years.
Okay, so we're.
I didn't take, I didn't take a deep dive into his email. I was having STM issues.
So, um, yeah, so this was, we reviewed with the, the superintendent, and this is all the, all of the district schools have to approve this for, for them to go forward, correct?
Correct, and our, our portion is about seven percent.
Correct, okay. Does anyone want to pull this out or keep it in the group vote? Okay, uh, fifteen is, um, chapter ninety-one liability. Any concerns or comments or questions on that? Um, chapter sixteen is local option acceptance for the voluntary property, um, excise bill forgiveness for veterans. Any questions or concerns about that? Okay. Um, seventeen is local option for, um, reduce the residency requirements for vets. Okay, eighteen is local option for, uh, deferral and recovery agreements for betterments. Um, anyone have any questions about that or comments? Okay. Uh, nineteen is land acquisitions at Covings Co. Cowing, I can't even say that, for the Cove.
This is one the board hasn't discussed yet. Um, Cowings Cove is off Summer Street in Norwell, and then the land comes into situat, and it borders of the South Swamp, and then it's tributary to our water system. The part in Norwell is upland, uh, potentially is buildable. Right now, a bluster, Maxwell Trust. Uh, the Maxwell Trust would like to sell it to us. All they're asking for, for a purchase price is the legal fees that they spent when they got the land from the developer who built Cowings Cove. If we didn't need town meeting approval to buy this, if we could have just bought it, uh, I would have brought it to the board to buy, but, uh, it's fifty-two hundred dollars. Fifty-two, fifty-two, eighty-four, and it's about eleven, twelve acres of, of upland and wetland that are bought, that again, it butts the, uh, uh, the South Swamp. Water Department is very interested in, in getting this land, especially for that price.
Okay, do we need to go through the motions of putting it in conservation if the town owns it?
Oh, goodbye for water. Water Department will have to kick in the fifty-two hundred dollars, so it will be protected as waterland.
Okay. Um, does the board want to hold this out to discuss since we have it? Or do you have any questions now? Um, does the board want to hold this out to discuss since we haven't, or do you have any questions now? No.
I'm good.
Yeah, it's not.
It's 200.
Okay, we will keep nineteen in the group. All right, Article Twenty, Land Acquisitions.
That'll be a haul and discuss that.
Take that out.
Yeah, we'll pull that one out for sure. Okay, Twenty-One is the Article Twenty-One, Dear Common Drive. We already discussed, anyone hold that out? No. Twenty-two is the Revolving Fund General Bylaw Amendment. And that's to add this Senior Center Food Service Fund. Anyone question on that? Okay, Twenty-three is the Waterways Mooring. I think we need to hold that out. Is that all right with everyone? Can we hold that out for a sec? There are some folks here that want to discuss that. Um. Twenty-four is Water Conservation, as proposed by our Waterways Resources. Anyone want to hold that out? Okay. Hold on, all these words. Twenty-five is the, we just reviewed these tonight, is the North Situate Bylaw Change. Anyone want to just hold that? Okay. Twenty-six is the, what is this, Mr. Goodrich? Oh, right, bone at this, they signed bylaw revision? Nope, okay. Um. And then twenty-seven will be the Fair Housing Article, that we just reviewed tonight. All good? Okay, oops, sorry, I skipped one. Twenty-eight is the Grant of Easement, Jim?
So this is the agreement the board made with the Greens relative to the senior center, so this is the easement for the property between the Greens' house and the senior center from the road, First Parish Road, approximately back even to where the front of their houses.
Any questions or concerns about that? Okay, Twenty-nine is another release of easement.
This is a release of easement as opposed to a grant of easement. When Godner Road was being designed, it was a 20-foot drainage easement that was on 26 Godner Road, Godner Lane, sorry. When the easement was put in, the drainage was put in, the drainage was actually put on 32 Godner Road, on the property next door, immediately adjacent to the easement. The owner of that property approached us in 2018 about that, that the drainage was actually on the wrong property, so we looked to get an easement from them to make sure we were draining in the right place. We made some improvements to the easement, we put a pipe in, ran it a little further back towards where the drainage was ultimately going. We put some riprap in for conservation to collect anything coming off, and as part of the agreement to get the easement on 26 Godner Road, we would agree to give up the easement on, sorry, get the easement on 32 Godner Road, we give up the easement on 26 Godner Road. So this is just to flip-flop the easements and put the drainage actually on the property that it's supposed to be on.
So is there a lane and a road, or are they both lanes or both roads?
Uh, Godner, I gotta go back and look more, I thought it was Godner.
Because you've got it, you've got it, I think we need to make sure that's corrected for the record.
I have the plan, so yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so keep it on there with the, with the asterisk that you got to get the language.
Make sure it's land road, I have that right, that's late night.
We all know we've got several roads in town that have the same Curtis Road, Curtis Lane, you know, whatever, Curtis Street.
Are we comfortable leaving this in the group vote? No, seeing, hearing no objection. Number thirty is, is, we'll hold that out, that says petition. Um, okay, so that gets us through, I'm going to stop share for a second, that gets us through sort of our potential group vote. And I have written down all of the numbers and I will, if I can find the right page, I'd be happy to. Turns out, I didn't realize, honestly, a little fun fact, did you realize that the chair can make motions?
Yes.
I know, I know. Well, you pass chairs, knew that, no one told me.
We try to limit what we tell you, Karen.
I am coming to realize that. So, I have all the numbers, so I'm going to move that the select board vote the warrant articles numbers, one, two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29. For the annual town meeting contingent upon any further changes by Town Council or the town administrator. So I have moved, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Ms. Conley, is there any further discussion on any of these motions, on this motion?
Does Lorraine agree? Did she keep, Lorraine, you usually keep track with all that too, so.
Yes, I agree.
Um, seeing no, like, you don't trust this method?
Well, I wasn't taking notes as diligently as you, so I needed at least have another second opinion.
All right, we've been, we've been motion second and confirmed by our esteemed advisor. If there's no further discussion, this requires a real call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Corrin?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries five zero unanimously, and that will bring us back to a discussion of Article Three, which is the capital, I believe, right, Jim?
Yeah, the capital, so the capital really revolves around the golf clubhouse, and I'll have Nancy run through the numbers. But we bid out the golf course project with several alternatives, first time alternates, and we really did not get a very good return in terms of the number of bidders, and the bidders were higher than we expected. So in speaking with the OPM and the architect, we went back out, we put all the alternates, with the exception of the parking lot, into the bid and bid it out again. And we see the number of bids, they still came in higher than what we had approved earlier. So Nancy, can you throw that up and just walk us through what we're looking at? We also are looking to do the parking lot as an alternate, and we put a factor in that we need to do, after talking to conservation and the planning. We need to do some additional drainage than what we have shown, so we put a factor in for that also. So if you want to just walk us through this real quick, Nancy? You're muted. Is she still muted?
It's still muted.
Need to unmute Nancy.
Do you see a PowerPoint?
We do now.
Okay, great. Then ignore the first few minutes of me mouthing the words that weren't there, so.
Say, anybody else know that?
What?
Just teasing me. Very quickly, this was what was before you in December of 2019, when we brought the project forward. And it was a three-phase improvement plan in June 2020.
What?
You gotta go to page two.
I am on page two.
We're on page one.
Hmm, okay, hold on. Let's try this again. Oh, good, I've completely lost it. Literally, and figure, literally and figuratively, I've lost it.
Was that open in PowerPoint or SharePoint, Nancy?
No, it was in PowerPoint, it was just on the other screen, and when I, when I opened it, I opened it on top of myself, so I couldn't see what I was showing you. That's all good. Let's try this again.
Yay.
Okay. So, that was what you, was the plan that was before you in December of 2019. In June of 2020, and we approved Phase One for 1.817 million. Just going to irritate the crap out of me, hold on. There we go, it's, I just, I can't see it, I could always see like one, one inch of the whole thing. In October 2020, the debt was issued for the clubhouse in expectation of a winter start on the, on project. As you know, the debt issue was extremely favorable, and this is what we ended up coming at, we estimated just over 2 million, it came in at 1.89 with the repayment, as Jim said at first, yes.
Nancy, can I be a big pain? Can you put it in slideshow view so we can see the whole, everything? Okay, we just, we can't see what you're talking about, we see like.
See it in slideshow now?
Nope.
Yeah.
And it's gone.
You, you asked me to put it in slideshow, so. How's that?
Yeah.
Better.
Are you in, what are you in, presentations, presentation?
Yep.
Yep, it's good.
Okay. I have no idea where I am. So, as Jim said, they came in over budget, we put it back out to bid, the bids came in with a range of 1.6 million to 1.88.
We're on the amortization schedule for the debt.
You people are killing me, I'm killing myself. Okay. How's that?
Yep.
So, this is the range of the bids from 1.6 to 1.88, this was after the second bid, so where did it go wrong? The OPM came in right on target, the architect came in right on target. The cost estimation we had, which was an independent cost estimation, was 1.5 million for construction, FFNE and contingency. The construction without FFNE and without contingency came in at 1.6, so when you add up those three things back together, there's a $291,000 delta. What wasn't factored in the original quote was materials testing, which is 20,000, and then because the project is now, has a delayed start, there needs to be some type of accommodation for trailer rental for a pro shop, and arrangements for the carts to be charged outside of the garage, which we put in an estimate of $50,000, and then just the additional cost estimation between the first and second was an additional 3,500. So, this has created a shortfall if the board wants to move forward with the project of about $450,000, but as Jim mentioned, we did have them put in an add alternate for parking, because we knew, we then knew that CPC was not going to approve the project, and that would create an altogether project of Phase One and Two, you'd have the clubhouse, you'd have the parking, it would be all done. If you wanted to move forward with that, you'd need another $770,000, keeping with the same estimation on your screen, you can see how much more that would cost. That would bring the total project cost from 1.8 to 2.5. The original estimate that I showed you, tried to show you in the second screen from December 2009, was 2.4, so we're still in the ballpark of what we thought Phase One and Two would be, but of course, it has gone up. So, one of the issues that we looked at was what else is going on in there, and then we had a concern with the parking lot add alternate, as to whether or not it met everything the Conservation Commission wanted. So the architect, the OPM, the architect and Jim met with the, the site, Cavett Air Consulting, the site engineers, they met informally with Conservation to see what was needed for drainage, and they are coming back with an estimate. Just for purposes of this conversation tonight, we put in $100,000 for additional drainage requirements beyond what was in the bid, which was about $200,000 was the range. 255 to, 198 to 293 was the add alternate for the parking lot. So it's significantly less than what the estimate was from DPW that went forward to CPC. And that would also include the additional $450,000 that's needed for FFNE materials testing and the like. All along, the concern has been that debt service would be too difficult for Widow's Walk to continue as an enterprise fund, it was, it was a burden for it before, at the $300,000 level, we did not want to go back up to that level. At maximum, we wanted to be at $250,000 or less, preferably. This would, if this was to move forward for a Phase One and Two with the additional amount, there would be years where we would be over that limit. So what could we do to assess, to address that? One thing is we have cash reserves already, we could do some pay downs on that, or we can continue to build those reserves so that we can use that to help us pay that debt as we go forward, if we have a year where the receipts are not sufficient to do so. So right now, the cash reserves that Widow's Walk has is $115,000 in their stabilization fund, and $69,000 in retained earnings, and as I mentioned earlier, they're already 90.4% collected for the year, so barring some type of major meteorological event that I don't want to test Mother Nature with, they will have another good year for retained earnings where they can put more money into their reserves, which is what we wanted that enterprise fund to do, was to build up their reserves. If you didn't want to move forward with the parking lot, but wanted to just finish the clubhouse project, this is what you would be looking at, it's the same slide from the one before, just showing where the years would be, where we would go over the $250,000. It would only be in the first few years, and then it would go back below that limit. So I, what's before the board to consider is whether or not the board wants to do anything with Widow's Walk, they have the options of rejecting all the bids, and just shoving the project and having it come back, either probably in the fall for additional funding. Or they could choose to add to the capital plan an additional amount to do just the clubhouse improvements, or to do the clubhouse improvements and the parking lot.
Thank you, Nancy, very concisely done.
Hazardly, I'm sorry to say.
No, that's all right, I love screen save, share. Questions and comments from the board?
Yeah, Nancy, what, I was having trouble following, what's the additional $450,000 if we don't do the parking lot?
The additional 450 is the, the contingency, hard and soft cost contingency of 147,000. It's the materials testing for 20,000, it's the FFNE and kitchen equipment for 145,000. And then we also have the 3,500 for the cost estimator, I think that's the three of them.
So the.
And $50,000 for trailer rental and some, some type of arrangement for the cart rentals, because we, because we're going to be during the height of the season when we do this.
Right, so we're going to gain revenue from rent if we're putting in a new facility for a restaurant for 150 grand?
Yes.
So that's, that we should get out of the lease?
We purposely have not put out the restaurant lease, because, one, the project, we were, we were in the middle of bidding it, so we didn't know when the person, person or entity could come in. But two, we also didn't know what it was we were going to have. If, if we keep the kitchen equipment out of it, potentially you could put it out in a lease that the person has to finish out the kitchen to their specifications, but in this current environment, with how restaurants have taken a beating, I don't know if you'd get anyone that would bite on that type of lease.
But that's what the $150,000 is for, right?
And we need 145,000 for FFNE, including the kitchen equipment.
And the majority of that is in the restaurant?
Yes.
So what is the, what is the, is the income for the restaurant in the revenue, projected revenue for the golf course?
It's the projected revenue for the restaurant, I'll check it, but I think it's somewhere around $25,000 for fiscal '22, because we knew it would be a partial year. We were getting, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the question, what are we going to, if we're going to invest $150,000 in a restaurant equipment, then we're going to get, you know, $40,000 a year rent, $50,000 a year rent.
Oh yeah, under the, the previous, let's see, we were getting $38,502 a year, and then prior to that, we were getting almost $49,000 a year.
Right.
And that was with, you know, I don't want to say a subpar kitchen, but not the nicest commercial kitchen you got.
Yeah, well, this is definitely a bigger, a bigger restaurant. And newer. The other question, so the 450 is for that, which I think can be discounted a little bit for the 150 grand of it, but the, the parking lot itself was only 250 grand instead of the 700?
And, and that was one of the concerns we had, is what exactly was in the specs for that, and it wasn't a complete removal of the parking lot. It was to grind it up and relay it, and then within the area where it is completely disintegrated, to relay that and restripe it. There, as I, as mentioned, they met with Conservation Commission informally to discuss the drainage requirements that ConCon was looking for, and Jim can speak to that a little bit more than I can, I put it in. That ConCon was looking for, and Jim can speak to that a little bit more than I can. I put in an, um, an estimate of a hundred thousand. The, and the engineer and the architect didn't seem to think it would be that expensive. But I don't know what not that expensive means in engineer and architect talk. So.
But it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the parking lot. And you put another, you put another hundred grand in.
For the drainage, yes.
I mean, that's my biggest concern. We got to fix that parking lot. And if we can get it at a third of the price that we thought it was going to cost, that's a big benefit. To the town. For that. I, I think that's a big plus also. Um, how much money do you think they're going to make this year? If you had to guess.
The, the, in fiscal twenty one or fiscal twenty two?
Twenty one.
Twenty one, um, the estimates we have are somewhere at least a hundred thousand dollars over budget for revenue. I mean, they only need a hundred thousand dollars to hit their revenue projection and they haven't even opened yet. And June can be a two hundred thousand dollar month. So even if they go.
So, so how much did they, did the budget break even? And you think they're going to, they're going to add a hundred thousand dollars to retained earnings?
Minimum, at minimum, yes, barring any meteorological event.
Right. It's going to be more than that, right? That's conservative.
I, I think so. And depending on if this project moves, if, if there was additional funds set, set for this project and a contract was awarded. They would start work. So that would disrupt it somewhat. Um, but you know, we would do whatever. They're going to be in the building. They're not going to be on the course.
Right, right. I think there's, personally, I think that there's enough. Pluses along the way to continue with the project. I think they're going to have a lot of, a larger retained earnings money coming in. That can pay that extra debt amount on those, on those first few years. I think the rent is going to be higher than what we're getting now for that. And I think we need to get the parking lot fixed and we're getting at a deal. So I think I would say to do the whole thing.
Nancy, could you just, uh, Jim, just, uh, what's the, so it gets approved. Let's say we put it forward and it's approved in April. Are you saying construction will start in the summer?
No, go ahead, Jim.
They would start as soon as they can mobilize and get going up there.
So they put a, what they do in golf course, they just put a trailer in the parking lot and that's where people go and get their tee times and stuff.
Yeah, okay.
So it just wouldn't be restaurant income for year one.
Right, and we're, uh, we're actually Tony, um, investigating whether we can bid out and maybe have some food trucks there.
When would it be finished, Jim?
Porta potties and all of that, right? Is that, how is that going to be paid for?
Yeah.
The contract?
You got to do that for porta potties or a trailer with bathrooms.
But that's not part of the contract with the.
I put fifty thousand dollars in there for the trailer for porta potties and to figure something out with the carts. Cause the carts are battery operated and they need to charge in the garage, but that will be the contractor's area. So we don't know if we need to have, put in a generator or if we have to just do pull carts for a period of time until we can get access to the garage again.
Maybe we could switch to caddies.
If you do pull carts, you better reduce your revenue.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah.
Uh, and I don't think the instruction was what, Nancy, about six, eight months. It was a short construction period.
It really was because we were going to take, cause if we started in February, we were going to take possession back of the pro shop in April and the restaurant in June. That was the orig- the original plan was very short timeline.
Cause it's renovation, not in the construction.
It's not, I mean, it's wood stick construction. It's not. We don't have the poor foundation. We use an existing foundation. I mean, for the board members, just refresh your memory, the, the deck that's there now will be enclosed. And then an additional deck will be added on to that. So, and then a couple bump outs for, for accessibility, but there's not huge amounts of structural work that needs to be done. It's really, it's copper.
Mr. Binoni, are you finished with your comments?
Yes, all set.
Uh, anyone else from the board have questions, comments about Mr. Ms. Conley? Oh, you're muted, Karen.
There was stuff going on in my kitchen. Um, so if we approve this at the town meeting in April. We will actually be able to expend funds prior to July first of twenty twenty one.
Could award a contract because you have a town meeting vote, but you wouldn't be touching this portion of the money until after July first. You couldn't borrow it until then, but we already have the one point eight million in-house ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Any other questions or comments? I, I have to say, I a hundred percent agree with Tony. I think that this is. Uh, delaying this makes no sense. Um, doing it without the parking lot to me makes no sense. That's the number one thing people complain about is the condition of the parking lot. And to kill the lily and not have an access doesn't make sense. I think the financing make, is supporting it. Yeah, I'm a little concerned that we might be a gra- a little optimistic about, you know, the people, the impact of construction on, on revenue. But I, I think it'll be made up in the.
You know, Karen, um, Linfield had two golf courses, two nine hole golf courses. And one of the golf courses, the pro shop was a trailer. We, we didn't have a pro shop. We had really nice porta potties and a trailer. It didn't seem to impact the play at all. So I, I think. You know, one of the reasons I, I'm in favor of this is I've seen what Ian's done down there with facilities that are not up to par. Uh, I'm excited to see what he can do if we give him a really nice facility down there. Uh, and I think he is a guy in place right now that will make it work. With whatever is going on down there. And, you know, as Nancy said, we're already hitting the number. The people are signing up and. The course was in great shape last year. If the course is in good shape, people will come play it.
Is there anything else in capital that we need to review, uh, that's changed?
That'll be, so the, the vote would be to approve article three as amended of Widow's Walk.
Uh, any other discussion on the capital budget? Are we prepared to make a motion? Mr. Goodrich?
I, I guess I would just say. I reluctantly agree with the fact that the, the parking lot is used by so much. Other than just the golf side as well. It is, I think. Going to be necessary, even though my philosophically for us still trying to run a golf course still boggles the mind. But, um, I think if we're going to have to move forward, um, I, I think we're going to have to include the. The parking lot.
Okay. Is anyone prepared to make a motion on, on article three? Move to approve article three, the capital plan as amended, adding the. Um, Widow's Walk Golf Course Clubhouse.
Second.
With Karen, second and Mr. Biniani. Any further discussion? I will quickly look to see if there are any raised hands on this matter. I'm seeing none. Um, so this requires a roll call vote.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Um, Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Biniani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Great, okay. Article three passes five zero. Uh, next, article four, which is the operating budget. Um, are there changes on there, Jim? I'm sorry.
As Nancy's list.
Yeah, as Nancy outlined in, um, her remarks about the debt changes.
Yeah.
And also we had presented the board, um, the list of changes that we were recommending based upon financial forecasts. Uh, several weeks ago. Yes, I don't know if you want to put that up, but.
Going to trust me to share my screen again?
It's only going to be fine, numbers and cats, Nancy. So I'm not really worried about what you're putting up.
How's that?
We see cats. No, I'm just kidding.
I brought up Excel because I thought it would be easier to read.
You scroll down a little?
Yeah. Sorry. So three hundred and forty eight, for roughly three hundred and forty nine thousand dollars additional funding available. Line share of that is being put in the DPW engineering line of two hundred thousand. And the rest is, um, the stuff that we discussed before. Does anyone want to dive into that or are we comfortable with the prior discussion?
The only thing I would ask is of that two hundred grand, can we add, can it be roads and seawalls and? Something else?
Sidewalks. This is what else?
Yeah, I mean, something, um, you know.
That's just the name of the, of the, of the line item.
That's that line item for the, from the debt exclusion commitment.
Can, it can be used for sidewalks, if that's something you want to.
Say it again?
It, it can be used for sidewalks. That's just the name of the account.
I can change the name of the account to roadway improvements. I mean, it, it, they just call it roads and seawalls, I think, because it fit.
So that's really any DPW construction project.
Involve within the, I would say involve within the layout of a road, yes.
Or, or seawall repair. We also, because.
I'm just, I thought you were just talking about the road part, but.
Oh, yeah.
They also have two hundred thousand dollars for roadway improvements in capital and then another five, about five fifty that's coming in for fiscal twenty two, chapter ninety.
Yeah, that's. Okay, I'm fine with it.
Good. Does the number, it does the number in, um, article four in our packet match all those adjustments?
All the adjustments have been made, but you're the only one who's seen the article until we've decided what to do.
Okay.
So couldn't it, I guess my question, sorry to jump back in, uh, but what about if we wanted to like do some improvements to a property? Like, let, let's say we wanted to do landscaping at, uh, the senior center or something.
You want, you gave beautification an extra three thousand dollars for landscaping.
I'm talking with the two hundred grand. I mean, if we came up with some other initiative that we wanted to do other than fix a road. Like we wanted to.
Mordecai Lincoln.
Yeah.
What in water guy Lincoln?
What if we wanted to build a shack? Cause we're going to be renting out kayaks at Mordecai Lincoln.
I would say facilities, public buildings money. And you put twenty thousand extra into that line.
Uh, roads and tree and grounds, I don't know what you wanted to do. But wooden border roads and seawalls, no.
So that, that is, has to go to that specific account. It's not a, it's not a list of projects. It's not a list of functions. I just think it limits to what we want to do with that, this one time surplus of a couple hundred grand. If, if we all said, look, we really want to fix something at Pier forty four, right?
Right.
You have money to fix Pier forty four if you want it. That's a separate fund.
Right. I'll, I'll come up with another example. If we wanted to, if we want to fix something. That isn't a road or seawall.
I mean, we, we have.
We can always move it at the end of the year.
We, we have accounts for pretty much everything you want to do, but we don't have an account that's. Here's a bucket of money that the board selection could use to do something that might pop up that we didn't think.
Well, let's say the old gates. We want to, we want to put a hundred and fifty grand into the old gates to do something.
Or we want to hire a consultant to review that to figure.
That would be your public facilities.
Public facilities.
Yeah, that, that's your kind of gen- generic place. If you want to make some type of improvement to a property or to a, a municipal facility, that's where you're going to go. And you did, in that list, you put an extra twenty thousand there, especially my thought was because of old gates.
So, so maybe we split that two hundred into one hundred there, one hundred.
Kevin Kelly will, will add you to his Christmas list forevermore if you do that.
Well, we would have to approve the projects.
Yeah. It's not unappr- it's appropriated, but not designated. Yeah, I, I think that's Tony's point is, we, I think the board feels like we don't want to get buck. I mean, this is, this is a little windfall. We don't want to get boxed in down the road to say, you know, you know, who know, I, I, we don't know. We can come up with examples all day long, but you know, tomorrow somebody may come up with a, with a, you know, a whiz bang idea. That we haven't appropriated and we can't, how to, what's the mechanism for us to access those funds?
I mean, that, that's the problem with a town meeting form of government is it's not nimble that you can just say, oh, we're going to move money around.
I mean, that's why I'm saying we should split up the two hundred grand between.
Reason we put it back in roads and seawalls is because when we took it out of roads and seawalls. The board's position was the town had an override to put that money in those accounts years ago. And they were reluctant to take it out of there, but we took it out because taking it out of there meant we weren't losing bodies. So the opportunity that we have to put it back to meet the will of the voters from before, we, we put it back in there. You know, I mean, at least in situ, it, not every town has a scheduled fall town meeting. They have annual town meeting. And we'll see you next year at, at town meeting. So we do have an opportunity if something comes up. But town meeting is not constructed where, you know, someone comes up with a great idea on April thirteenth.
No, but Jim, you're making our point.
But, but Tony.
By putting it all in that one bucket, I mean, great, a good point. We can move it at, at, in September. But if we put it in two buckets, then we could do a sidewalk and we could fix old gates. You know, we could, we could have a little bit more flexibility with those funds.
Can both, but we're, we're, in either case, we're constraining ourselves. So if we put it into. The facilities budget and all of a sudden we have a great idea to do a sidewalk somewhere. We don't have the money because we put it over in for the facilities budget. And if we leave it in the roads and seawalls and someone says, hey, we have a great idea. We can fix old gates for a hundred thousand dollars. It, it's not there. I mean, worse comes to worse, the town calls a town meeting and, and does something. But no matter which bucket you're putting it in, there's an opportunity cost of what bucket you're taking it out of.
Right, but the roads and seawall, there's already five hundred and fifty, two hundred and another whatever we leave in this.
Yeah, but I would argue that we've got a lot of roads in this town, Tony, that we haven't touched. You know, we, uh, you know, you got to consider roads beyond. First Parish, Beaver Dam, Oceanside, you know, the big guys, right? There are a lot of neighborhoods in this, in this town that need some attention. And if this allows us to help fund some of that, I, I think, I think it needs to stay where it originally belonged. And I don't think we should lose sight of the work that needs to be done on the roads in this town.
I'm certainly not losing sight of that, but it's, it just limits any other opportunity that we want to do. Any other improvement in town that isn't a road, we wouldn't have this kind of windfall to help. But we can move it at special town meeting also if we do come up with a great idea. So I'm not, I'm just talking, we just.
Mr. Goodrich?
No, I mean, I, I, I kind of want to echo Tony, what, what you're saying. I understand that, I mean, it's, it's a matter of flexibility. And is this, is this pot giving us the most flexibility when two trees fall down in the town forest? And, and I'm trying to find volunteers to clear them because they're still, you still can't walk down. What we're trying to do. And we're going to wait weeks and weeks because the funding's not there. Things happen. No, I, and I'm with you that we have to find the right buckets. I just want to make sure that it's refining those that, that it's the most. Flexible for us to meet some of those needs.
Yeah, I think that's Jim's point is that there is no magic bucket. And that this proposal is to put the funds where they've been, they've been pirated in the past. Um, and I do like the sort of safety valve that if we get a, you know, we don't move that quickly. And so we get a whiz bang idea in two months. It's only four months to special town. So, um. You know, it has to live somewhere. And the biggest question is we don't have a plan for spending that allocation right now. I know Kevin's got a mile long list of roads, but you know, that was, wasn't that something that was supposed to be before the board a while ago? With the, with the, what the schedule was for, uh.
Yeah, I've seen it. As soon as I get it, you'll get it and we'll put it on. I haven't, I haven't seen the listing.
Uh, maybe hold off on this vote until we get that list. What do you think, guys?
All right, let's, it's late, so. I, it's a, I blame myself because I don't have that, that great idea right now to move that money to. But we can move something at special town meeting if we come up with a great.
I don't want to belabor it, Tony. It would be hard to have a line item selectman expenses.
No, you're, you're, you're exaggerating my point. No, you're 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 exaggerating my point, my my, I should have an idea right now that says I want to invest. A hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in the gates to turn it into a. A teaching. You know, a handicap facility for. You know, training, blah, blah, blah.
Right, and if you did, I'd say transfer the money, but I guess my point is, we don't have a. Kind of an ombuds line that's just there with money.
No, you keep saying that, that's not what I'm asking for. I I know that.
The the thing that I think is most on the horizon is the next steps on Pier forty-four. And the problem is, I think that we've got ample time before November, we still got to come up with a plan, proposal, pricing and funding mechanisms.
And again, there there is money in Pier forty-four.
There's money in Pier forty-four, it could be a CPC thing, there's. We have so many unknowns on that, so the six months doesn't bother me if we, this is a bucket that we need for that.
We won't get the splash grab done for this summer either way.
Karen?
Now, my question is, are there some immediate projects that we know? We could use that money for that two hundred thousand? That would just be kind of like. The famous shovel-ready. Situation. I mean, in my mind, two hundred thousand is almost, it it's not even close to being enough. To do the work that we should be doing on sidewalks, it's not even close. But are are there projects for this two hundred thousand dollars now?
In in terms of paving and things like that?
Whatever.
Absolutely.
Hundred.
Kevin will spend all that.
Well, then, I mean. I would be in favor of leaving it in if we can use it immediately.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with, I guess it's the clarity too part of it, right, it just harbor resilience. Is that part of seawalls, if we're doing some of that vegetation that we that we, they said that we should do the plant, I mean. That's all, it's just making sure that we know it's not just going to some void, that we don't know then what happens.
Yeah, I mean, the seawall money. Seawall money. That's appropriated is often used for the engineering costs, designing whatever it is. Riprap, seawall, whatever, and then because of the cost of the projects. You know, we have to go out and get the money, or as what happened in minded. Two years ago, when all of a sudden the little park there disappeared and the seawall was being undermined and all the. All the land was being sucked out of the ocean, we had to do, was about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to answer the emergency repairs. So. You know, it's just seawalls, roads is a word, seawalls is a word. You know, the the really, the reality of it is, if it's. Dealing with seawall flood protection. Then those all meet that criteria.
Yeah, and the intent was back then to create that seed money so we could continue to. Develop and permit projects. While you went out and asked for grants, et cetera.
I'm happy to support this, but I do want to have. Sooner rather than later, if if this is approved at town meeting, Kevin should be walking in with the the plan.
It it should be ready before town meeting.
Yeah, no, I know, but I mean.
He hasn't ready to go right around now, he should get it. The asphalt plant's open generally in April, so. We usually have it before then because that's soon as the plant's open, they'll try to get started.
I think the board would like to to know where that money is going to go, if if he's going to be allocating it. Or if it's just going to be there for emergencies, whatever it is, I think we need it, I have no problem leaving it there, I just, I think that we. I don't know who said it, but we don't want it to just go into the. Netherlands and not know what happened to it. Agreed, and if we come up with a good plan, Mr. Vignani, we will. Grab it before Kevin allocates it.
Now, terms of Egypt Beach.
Article thirty passes, we might need money for that.
Somebody prepared to make a motion on Article Four?
Move to pass. Move to accept Article Four as written with the changes made by the town administration.
It's moved by Mr. Vignani, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Connolly enthusiastically, this matter requires overall call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes five zero. Please. Remember what we said, Jim, because it's going to be in the minutes. What? So now we're onto Article twelve, which I'm scrolling rapidly through to pull up. I passed it, hold on. Find it yet, let's see.
CPC page.
It's CPC.
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five, oh.
And Chair, on Article twelve, the copy of the warrant you have, that trail parking and access additional funding is incorrect, it's listed as fifty. I have corrected it in the version I'm updating right now to thirty for Mr. Fenley's confirmation.
For which line item, I'm sorry?
Um, it's line item eight, it's number eight. In the in the warrant you have, it says fifty, but he provided the correct number, it should be thirty, and I've made the correction.
Okay, cool, all right, thank you for that. Okay, so we had a lovely presentation, I'm going to see, I think I can do this. Okay, so here are. This is Article twelve CPC. Which has the regular allocations, and here are the articles with the correction of this is thirty. Does anyone have any? Questions, comments or concerns about the proposed expenditures?
Well, don't we need to speak about Chief Justice Cushing, number eleven?
We do.
The question for the board is whether you want to. Leave in your request to purchase that land with CPC money and put it into open space. Or whether you want to leave in your article later on. Where we're going to purchase it with general fund revenue and keep it for municipal purposes, whatever we decide those might be.
Where's where's that second article?
Article twenty.
It is twenty, okay.
Yeah, before we do that, just, I just want to, on the, just take it off the table, the other proposed. And approved but or and recommended by CPC. Articles six, seven, eight, nine and ten, does anyone have any? Comments that they'd like to make on those issues?
Karen, just so the record's clear, those are not articles, those are numbers.
I'm sorry, yes, the numbers under Article twelve.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
I I'll just voice my opinion on number ten again. I think, I don't, I'm not opposed to the project itself, but I think we really have to. Do the two things that I mentioned, we have to understand what the total scope of projects are, and we have to understand what the list is, so that. We can really give some input in terms of what. You know, Penny and Frank are coming up with as the next project that they want to do.
And I think Dan heard that, so hopefully they'll put that in the verbiage.
Well, it's not Dan, it's not Dan's responsibility. Dan just talks about whatever comes before him. No, the the scope of the project, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Are are, do we have the option of voting these individually, I would assume we do? That we would support, you know, let's say we support everything, just to say, we have a split vote on Article, on number ten?
Well, I'm not the split vote, so.
If I may.
Yes.
What what we're missing here. Is the commentary that goes into the advisory booklet. Which is usually done by the the people on the CPC committee. Explaining each of the projects, and I think, Tony. To your point, part of the explanation should be. And the total cost of the project is estimated to be, and it's a two- to three-year process, however they choose to. You know, write it up and then provide it to the advisory committee for the booklet, so I think, I think this is simply. Warrant language that we've got here without any explanation.
Yes, I agree.
Tonight whether or not we support this.
I I understand that, but I'm saying.
It can be resolved.
Yeah, but by making sure there is appropriate explanation in the advisory booklet. You know, the town can still decide yes or no. But a fuller explanation other than seventy-seven thousand dollars for. Design and permitting, it it does doesn't give you the opportunity. For an explanation, as none of them do actually, when you look at it, so.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I mean, the one thing I didn't mention when we were talking about it is, and Jim, maybe this is something you could speak to, is, I kind of. I kind of cringe because sort of the rule of the thumb, the rule of thumb for. Construction. Is design and engineering is ten percent of the project cost.
Yeah, generally.
So if that is, if that.
But that is. Not that long, that's more vertical construction than.
Right.
Like this, but I just from experience knowing what the pathways and norwell cost. They're expensive.
Yeah, and this is a conservation property.
Yeah, to get across. A resource area like that. You have to use special equipment. It'll be expensive, I don't think it's going to be seven hundred thousand, but it's going to be expensive.
Right, but I think that the aftermath of just the bridges is not even close.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't even do the path, it costs five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the. The street and the parking up in the West End. I I'm, I may be wrong, but it was a lot of money. I wouldn't be surprised if the if the path was way more than we think it's.
I've been down the MBTA path, I haven't seen what kind of condition this. Trail is going off it. How much work it's going to need, I honestly can tell you. I I think, though, just for the purposes of the discussion tonight, I think the first thing you should decide is whether you want to leave number eleven in or out. Get that off the table.
All right. Comments about. The acquisition of. Chief Justice Cushing highway land, so it's Article, what's the other one, Article twenty?
Article one.
If it's in Article twenty, it would be purchased for municipal use. Which means we could find a use for it. We need to certainly note that at present, it is one of the considered sites for a water treatment plant. We're doing, as the board will remember, we have put out for design of our new water treatment plant. And one of the options is to put it. You know, to relocate it where it is currently located someplace on that site. And but we asked them to also consider this as a potential site. That doesn't mean it's going to go there, it just means we're exploring that, if we buy it with municipal funds, we could. We would, we would have the option of putting whatever is necessary for town, I'm just, I'm stating this more for the public than anything.
Protect a portion of it, you could use a portion of it. Let's say, just for discussion purposes tonight, that the water treatment plant. Is going to stay down where it is, but it's going to encroach upon the Little League field. Then you would need a place to potentially relocate the Little League field. And this could be a potential place if you buy it for municipal use, but not if you buy it for conservation purposes.
But what if you bought it with CPC funds without conservation purposes? As recreation?
You have to either buy it for conservation, or recreation, or historic, or.
I said recreation.
Affordable housing, but then, Tony, if you wanted to put the water treatment plant there, you couldn't, because now it's a recreation purpose.
That's the rest, the rest of my question, so you can't. And the only way to use it for a potential water. Functionality would be to buy it with municipal dollars.
Buy it with water dollars, but then you restrict it to water purposes and you can't do anything else.
Right.
And what what is our, what what are we recommending as to how we're going to finance that?
It'll be a borrowing, a borrow.
Well, I know we're going to borrow, but are we going to pay back? With water or pay back with debt, you know?
It, that'd be ultimately determined by what the ultimate use of the property was. So not to make me so exposed, but if a part of the property was used for a water treatment plant, then you would. Basically, I mean, the way I would do it is take the per acre cost of the property. Whatever we use by the water department, we could charge the water department, whatever wasn't used by the water department, we could charge the general fund.
So could we conceivably make the initial purchase with town money to open it up for town purposes? Say we identify that 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 acreage that we need. For whatever, whatever it is, right, if it's just placing the ball field, or is it putting the water treatment plant? Can CPC then come back in subsequent years and reimburse the town, if you will, for the balance and put it into conservation?
I don't think so.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that, because.
I think they could, but I don't think they would.
I'm not sure they could.
I I don't, I don't think you can use CPC money to buy property from yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to double check if there was any way to to move those.
Having said that, not to throw a wrench into the works, if we were to buy it for municipal purposes and put the water treatment. Plant on part of it, and then we potentially could go back to CPC. To build a couple of, you know, three, four, small, affordable housing, you know, a a a small project there. So CPC could pay to build affordable housing, I believe.
It could potentially pay to help build a habitat for humanity home.
Right.
Help, pay to help, again, if we had to relocate the ball field, to relocate the ball field, pay for that.
So a component on it, okay, got it.
But you you, I don't think you could use CPC, if the town buys a piece of property. I don't think.
Understood.
Money to buy the conservation restriction basically of the property.
So I would recommend that we don't use CPC funds.
Okay, let me ask you one last question on this, Jim, is. If we purchased it with municipal funds but did not allocate it for a use for a while, how is that? It's not allocated anywhere, so is, how is the debt service paid?
We would do a ban, I would think, Nance, we carry the ban for a couple of years, and then we're just paying interest until such time as we. Have to either issue a bond or have a use for it.
From the general fund.
Right.
General fund, okay.
From the general fund, yeah.
But a ban is just the, just the interest.
Okay.
So it's not a new payment.
All right, Mr. Vignani has proposed that we remove it from CPC and keep it in Article twenty. Is there further discussion on the board on that matter? I suspect there might be some participants who have stayed up late with us that might want to chime in.
Can I ask one question before you do that? Does that mean that it's going to come off CPC? So eleven will not be on the warrant, it will not be on the.
Correct.
What's application, so the board will be withdrawing their application. I don't think CPC is going to put it on themselves, see your application, so you'll be withdrawing it and it'll come off.
Okay, good.
Any other board member want to discuss this before I open it to the public? Okay, so if you are still awake and you would like to discuss the. The application for the purchase of the property on Chief. On, I can never say it, it's too late. The piece of property we're talking about, you can raise hand or take your video off and let us know you'd like to contribute if there are any. And. Not seeing any hands raised. I will, in good faith, share with the board that I received a call from our. Jim, poor Jim, our planning board director, Ms. Burbine. Who strenuously opposes not putting this property in conservation. She thinks that she remain a CPC. Purchase that they have, that she individually, I don't know, I I I don't think she was speaking for the board, but individually, she felt that. This is an environmentally sensitive site and should not be done, nothing should be done with it except. Conservation, so I am beholden by all that is decent to relay that to you. If that in any way changes your opinion, please let me know, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion, do we, I guess. Well, we're talking about number twelve, so it would be a motion on how we would approve or not approve Article.
So I've got a motion to remove. Our application to CPCT for Article eleven.
Okay, that's the first step.
For item eleven.
Okay, can. Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Goodger, I'm sorry, I stand first. To remove, to to withdraw our application to CPC and remove it from Article twelve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call that.
Sorry, I'm muting again, Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, we have.
Sorry, Madam Chair, just before you go on, may I, I just want to thank the the CPC committee for entertaining our application because we put it in late. Right, because the 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 land came up. Right? Because the, the, the land came up for sale pretty quickly. Um, and I just appreciate all of their cooperation to listen and to consider it. Um, and their patience as we kind of worked through this because it really wasn't, it didn't, it wasn't known that the board's preference was really to hold it for a broader municipal purpose at the onset. So I just, I just want to thank them and just make that clear.
Thank you, Ms. Karen, absolutely. Um, all right, so, um, thank you. So the article has been approved with the read, with the removal of the, um, number eleven by the board. Okay, so that brings us to article twenty, which is sort of the corollary to this. Uh, let me see if I can get to it.
Uh, point of order, I don't think we voted on article twelve.
I don't think we did either.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean the whole article.
I thought the motion, the motion was
To remove eleven.
Remove from CPC, but I thought it was also, um, and to extract it from article twelve. That's right, fine, that's fine, we can.
I typed here, uh, motion to approve article, uh, twelve with removal of item eleven. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Goodrich.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that, so that's fine.
So.
I didn't say that, I don't think.
You did say that you moved, there was a motion to withdraw our application. I thought we had combined the two. Would you like to do a separate one just for the record?
Move to accept article twelve with, uh, our item number eleven being omitted.
Second.
Okay, I think actually that's the one she's recorded, but yes, so sec. Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Karen. Now for questions, roll call.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion, motion again carries five zero. Um, okay, so article twenty, moving right along. I lost the over under on the meeting time. Um, shoot, hold on, I'm sorry, my computer just froze. Um, so article twenty. Um, sorry, getting there, apologize. Anyone else tell me what page it is?
It is on page one fifty eight.
Oh, thank you, Tony. Okay. Uh, another example of why we don't put all of the data out there. Okay. Article twenty land acquisition for this property, um, and it is through, um, through municipal funds. Do we have any further discussion on this or would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion unless someone wants to talk about it.
I think we just talked about it.
Okay, move, um, move, um, move to authorize the town to purchase, uh, fifteen plus acres of land located at four, four, three through four, six, one Chief Justice Cushing Highway for one point three five million dollars.
And to support article number twenty.
Yes, move to support that.
Article, uh, motion made by Mr. Vignani, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries five zero. Uh, thank you for that. Uh, we are now on to article twenty-three, which is the proposed bylaw changes, uh, waterways, uh, and mooring, specifically mooring, um, changes for, oh crap, sorry, sorry, it's Seth, take that out of the video. Um, uh, uh, bylaw changes, so, um, this has generated some interest. Um, I know that some of the board members have received some questions about this, but I will summarize, or miss, actually, I will ask Ms. Karen. Would you like to summarize the changes or would you like me to? I'm happy to do it.
You can, I mean, I'm not.
Okay, so the change.
We're just changing and adding, I mean, the changes are outlined pretty clearly. I don't, I don't think, I don't know if this board has any additional questions and um, really moving to open up three, the big change, right, is to open up three moorings for rental that the town can rent to promote the harbor and the economy. Um, and then also some small changes with regards to calling into the harbor master to, um, schedule to tie up, you know, their dinghies in the proper places.
Right, just cleaning up the, the, just the operations down there.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, prior, the prior bylaws did not allow any rentals at all. And this is just cleaned up to allow, um, the town to do three sites. Um, are there any questions? Does the board feel informed about this topic and ready to move forward? Um, and I, I do, I do know that there are a couple of people, um, here that are informed from the, uh, Waterways Committee. Any questions or comments? I don't see any. Uh, does our audience have any questions or comments before we take a vote on whether there's a support? Uh, you can raise your hand. I see no hands raised or videos on. So, um, would someone like to make a motion?
Number we on?
Twenty-three.
Articles to support article twenty-three as submitted.
Motion by Ms. Karen, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Goodrich, uh, this art, this motion requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the article, um, the, uh, the motion carries five zero unanimously in support of article twenty-three. Uh, which takes us to the last one, which is the citizens petition number thirty. Um, sorry, just looking for the page again. This is the, uh, uh, Ms. Burke's um, petition to, um, to make revisions to our water conservation measures. Um, the water conservation mandate and rebate program.
Didn't she, was she going to withdraw this on the floor?
I don't recall that, Mara.
Excuse me?
I don't recall her saying she was going to withdraw. We, I think, suggested that.
Okay.
I think the board's position when it was before you was, uh, in theory, it's probably a good idea, but I think it needed some more vetting. Through various boards, it'd probably, uh, a little more specificity in the article.
Yeah.
But I don't think she committed either way to withdrawing it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the board's underlying reaction was, this is a great thing, thing to have our waterways people really spend some time on. Uh, Mr. Goodrich?
I, I think it's mine, I've had some conversations, uh, with her, um, since. And I think it's my understanding, again, I don't want to speak for her or what exactly may happen. I, I think it's, it's possible that there could be a, uh, an amendment to pare, pare this back greatly and leave, um, possibly just s- um, some small elements or just the elements around the, um, the rebate program intact. Thus simplifying it and it's possible that there might be some educational campaign ahead of time. People know that this is going to kind of happen. So kind of taking most of those other concerns, uh, I think that we expressed out, so then we just, it's possible that, uh, it could move forward, but again, I can't.
Okay, so there's possibility amended on the floor, but our charge this evening is to vote whether or not we support this article as submitted to the board.
Yes.
Um, I, is his board having any further comments on that or? Um, is there any?
I would make a motion not to support article number thirty.
Motion on the floor is, um,
As written.
Right, uh, Mr. Vignani has voted, uh, has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Conley. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this matter requires a roll call vote. So, uh, so let me just be clear, if voting yes means that you do not support it, let's just make that clear. I always hate these double negatives because you, your motion is not to support it. Right?
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
No.
All right, so the motion carries four, one, uh, Mr. Goodrich, um, voting, um, in negative. Um, that concludes.
Can I just add one quick comment? Uh, A- Andrew, if you talk to her, I think the rebate part of her plan was very good. And if she is going to go with that, if she can tell us what it's going to be before town meeting, it will go a long way in terms of time and us being able to explain it, help her explain it if she comes before us or tells us what's going on first. Cause she's going to have to go up and redact the whole thing and it's going to be, it's going to confuse people.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, I'll, I'll express that and, and I, I know she's trying, working with folks at, uh, uh, water, water resources as well, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to get a look at it early if we get it from the moderator to Andrew to make sure whatever he's proposing, he's going to allow it.
Yeah, no, she's already, yeah, they're already in contact. Just vetting everything. There's another attorney.
Has it been heard by the advi- advisory committee yet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they had, anyone know what their?
They haven't voted on it yet.
They're voting tomorrow, right, I think.
Thank you.
Thursday, I believe.
Um, and just
Was it the same proposal as was proposed to, to us?
It's the same article.
Yeah.
They can't.
You can't, you can't change your petition article once it's been submitted.
I know that, but it just, I'm just curious whether or not.
Rookie.
Oh, all right, it's after eleven. We're gonna, we're gonna play nice for us. Um, I, I just, um, I was gonna, I'll do this later, but it's, it's relevant to this conversation. Jim and I have been, um, discussing a dates, potential dates for a joint meeting prior to town meeting to have a public forum with advisory. Um, it has not been confirmed, um, because we have to talk to the moderator and advisory and all of that, but we're tentatively looking at, um, April fifth. Um, so that might be an opportunity if, if there is an amendment that is going to be proposed, that maybe it can be discussed, um, in advance, so you might want to let them know that. Um, okay, so no idea what we're supposed to do next. Hold on, let's go back to page one of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Um, we have concluded our review of the annual town meeting warrant, I believe. Yes. So now Honda new, new business, yay, uh, which is to discuss drain layer license renewals in twenty twenty-one. There is one, um.
Move to approve a renewal of drain layer license for Mankowich Contracting Inc.
It's moved by Mr. Vignani. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Goodrich, um, as far as comments. Um, I just want to say in some concern that, you know, we do these pretty routinely and, um, you know, this is serious stuff, you know, there it's operating heavy machinery, blah, blah, all that. And, um, that these, before they come to us, they're vetted and, and reviewed by our DPW team for safety and all of the above. So with those comments, because we want to stay here longer, um, we have a, a first, uh, motion and a second. If there's no other further discussion, it is a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, that brings us to liaison, liaison reports at eleven fifteen. Does anyone have a liaison they'd like to share? Ms. Karen?
Unfortunately, I have a quick one. Sorry, it's so late. I, it's nothing more that I want to do than go to sleep. Um, so I just want to let you folks know, we might need to put it on the next agenda, is that the DEI committee unanimously voted to make the town employee a voting member. If you'll remember, the town employee was designated as a non-voting member. It was discussed. Um, they, they want to all ensure that Lucia has, you know, more of a say and, and stronger representation on the committee. So, um, they voted unanimously to give her that, that power. So I don't, I don't know if we need to go back at the next meeting and amend our charter, um, which I have no problem doing. I think, you know, we all, I don't think any of us will have any issues with it, but just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, so, uh, Jim and Lauren, can we put that on the next agenda? We do have to change the charter.
We'll change the charge.
Charge, the charge, not the charter, it's.
Sorry, wrong word, eleven twenty PM.
Um, any other liaison report, burning liaison reports?
So the, the change is town employee becomes a voting member, not necessarily Lucia.
Correct.
She just, she would be appointed town employee at the moment, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Um, any other updates at this late hour? Seeing none, uh, Madam Burke, would you share correspondence with us?
Yes, um, we did have a piece of correspondence in mid-February, it, between vacation and everything that's going on, it's sort of, um, I don't know if anyone's addressed the, uh, letter yet, but we did receive an email slash letter from the, uh, Merritt Woods condominium association, uh, expressing their concerns about the Bartlett, uh, Bartlett Fields, I guess it's called, development and, um, so I just want to acknowledge that we did receive the letter. Um, did anyone from the town respond?
Yeah, Jim has drafted a response and that will go tomorrow.
Yeah, I drafted a response, uh, either went out today or it's going out tomorrow.
Okay, and I assume they're being told that the planning board is probably the place for them to be.
The zoning board of appeals actually would have the forty B. I mean, my response was, as they mentioned in their letter, we have not seen a plan.
Okay.
Once we do, we'll let them know and there'll be a robust public process that they'll be able to participate in. And in the meantime, I sent a copy of the letter to the zoning board of appeals.
Great, thank you. That's all.
I can, I'll send the board a copy of it. I have a PDF of it.
Okay, great. Um, that leaves us to, if that's all the correspondence, we have approval of meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Would you like a motion, Madam Chair?
Love a motion, Mr. Vignani.
Move to accept the meeting minutes for the board of select, the select board meeting held on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, is there a second? Second by select board member Karen, uh, is further discussion seeing?
The mouthful.
Requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, which, um, brings us to our last item. As I mentioned at the beginning, many hours ago, we are not going to executive session tonight, so our last motion would be to adjourn and to sign documents, which I would encourage everyone to scurry into town hall tomorrow to get done.
Yes. We have to have the warrant signed and we have all those phase four contracts for the water, so some pretty important things need to be signed.
So I'll see you tomorrow. Is there a motion to adjourn and sign documents?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Conley, seconded by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussions? Seeing none, this requires a final roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll take all those yawns, it's yes.
That motion carries five zero. We are now adjourned and we, uh, thank you all for staying late with us.